Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is being video recorded and is also being broadcast live on the Town of Pennfield's website, which is www.pennfield.org, also on the Town of Pennfield's Government Access Channel 1303, and on streaming media devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You can search Pennfield TV in your device's app store, and you should know it is free. If you'd like to address the board on any public hearing matter, there will be specific public participation opportunities for each matter after the board responds to the applicant's presentation with its own questions and concerns. Anyone that is viewing this meeting remotely and wishes to address the board can participate either by phoning in at (585) 340-8771, or by submitting a comment electronically also at pennfield.org. Each meeting, we'd like to point out that we think the town does a really good job of notifying citizens what the zoning board agenda is going to look like, and the town does that so people know that they can come in and speak about applications, or submit electronically, or now via the phone as well. The town does this by publishing the agenda. The town also requires applicants, many of you are familiar with this, to put up signs on the property so folks driving by realize, hey, something's going on there, and if they're interested, they can certainly call the town and find out. And then also by sending postcards to people that live within a certain number of feet of the subject property. We think it does a good job of getting people out to come and speak about applications, and we think that helps us do our job better. Tonight, we'll start with this work session. We'll tend to typical business here and any tabled matters that we may have, and then right after that, we'll go right into the public hearings. We do have a pretty full agenda tonight, which is fine. I want everybody here to know that we've all reviewed the written applications, which contain a lot of very thorough and good information, so please know that when you come up to speak about the matter. Don't feel you need to reiterate everything because we have read it. We'll have some questions for you without doubt, but on the other hand, I want to make sure that I'm clear that everybody is going to be allowed to say whatever they wish about their application, and any application. So, with -- and by the way, since COVID started, we changed our routine a little bit, so we used to hear all the applications, take a break, go in the back, deliberate, and vote on each then. What we've been doing for quite a while, and I think we all agree that it's kind of working better, is that once an application is done, we'll launch right into the environmental review first, and then into consideration of the merits of the program. So instead of everybody having to wait around to the end, you'll be able, if you choose, to leave after your application is done. You can, of course, you feel free to stay and watch the rest of the agenda if you like. With all that being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, Andy, let's go ahead with the first application.
Okay. Amira Smalovic, 21 Black Duck Trail, Rochester, New York, 14626, requests approval for a conditional use under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.7-C1A of the code to allow the operation of a restaurant, Billy's Homestead, at 1766 Empire Boulevard. The property is currently or formerly owned by Rancheck Corporation and is owned General Business, SBL number 093.15-1-54. This is application number 22Z-0014.
Hi, guys.
Hi. Have a seat. And then, I forgot to say earlier that one of the first things we do, just to make sure it gets on the record, is we ask folks to give us your name and address, even though we already have it, just in case there's people at home who want to make sure that they know who you are.
Okay, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
My name is Amira Smalovic, and then I live in Greece, 21 Black Duck Trail. So recently, like, beginning in February, we took over existing business. We became the new owners, me and my husband, at, you know, 1778 Empire Boulevard. It's Sunrise Plaza, so it's a Billy's Homestead.
Sure. It's right up on the screen.
Oh, yeah. So, this is, it's for us, it's like something, it's new opportunity to, you know, a new challenge for all of us, like to, and, but so far, we kind of, you know, doing well. The restaurant is like, that restaurant has been like, existing for 50 years, so with the 62, 62, like, you know, occupation, it's like 62 people can, you know, have a seat. So we take employees, and then, what else? So we serving like breakfast and lunch, and then we are also open from like, seven days a week, from Monday through Friday. We are open from 6:30 till 2:30, and then on Friday till 8:00, and on weekends also until 2:30. So, the menu also, we have like, it's all like parking, it's available from, you know, the people, like, who's coming, who's entering. The parking, it's available from that, you know, they have enough parking for all customers who's entering, and then, what else? We have, I think, reasonable prices for all, you know, customer who's coming, especially now since everything is going up, you know, it's so hard for everybody to get, you know, on the board, but we trying to do our best, as a, you know, as a new owner, so I think so far, we doing good.
Okay. George, go ahead.
Yep. So, just thank you for the overview. That was very helpful. I have a couple of questions for you. So, the hours of operations seem to be the same as they were previously.
Yeah, we, everything is the same. We just took over, like, so we kept all employees, the hours and everything, it's just, you know, just the, you know, we didn't change also the menus, so everything is like, same, just the new owners.
Will there be any additional activities there that had not been previously done there? Any outdoor activities that would be scheduled?
No, not real, no. No, we don't plan, we're not planning anything to do, you know, it's only now we, it's available, you know, for the people, you know, get online, and then taking out food, ordering online and take out the food.
And you won't be making any changes to the actual layout or structure at this point?
For now, we're not planning anything, so. I don't know in the future, but for now, we will stay as.
Stay as is.
Yeah, as it is, so.
So, to kind of overlay this, what you're saying is that as the new owners, you're looking to operate the restaurant as it was operated before, under the existing variance, and you're asking for the same variance?
Right.
To, in essence, run the exact same business, the exact same way?
Exactly, yeah. We didn't, exactly, yeah, we didn't change anything, so we just kept, you know, kept everything same, so. Yeah, we not, actually, we're not planning for now to change anything with the restaurant, you know, just working the same hours. Maybe in the future, a lot of people be asking if we can extend the hours, but I don't know, it's, you know, it's so hard now for everybody, so maybe in the future, we can, some days, exist the hours, maybe for, you know, dinner time, but for now, we will just keep breakfast and lunch.
Excellent. Okay. I don't have any additional questions.
Any questions from the board?
No.
Anyone in the audience care to speak about this application? All right, I don't see any electronic submissions, and I don't think anybody has called in, so let's just go ahead and proceed with the consideration of the environmental.
Yeah, in regards to the seeker, I would move to make this type two action, requiring no further review.
Second.
All right. We have a motion on the seeker in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now the merits of the application?
In essence, this is the exact same business running, the exact same way, and so the merits of this are, there's no change to this, and she's just asking for a renewal of the same variance that was provided to the previous owners. So, my recommendation is to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve in a second. Well stated, George. I agree with everything you said. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you, guys. I really appreciate.
Good luck.
And thanks.
So after I went through a 10 or 15, oh, you're good. If you want to hear me, feel free to say. Go through a 10-minute explanation of what our process is, and we're going to start with our work session, and then I blew right into the public. So, I've had more than one person remind me of that, and that happens. Okay, so it's not the end of the world. Let's go back to the work session, and let's start with the item of approval of the minutes from the March meeting.
I'll move to approve as written. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then, does anybody have any questions about any application tonight for clarification purposes?
I had a question about the first one, actually.
I hope nobody at home can read lips. All right, we good?
Yeah.
Okay. Again, good luck, and I apologize for missing that, but application number two.
Lisa Whirl, 153 Hyelich Drive, Pennfield, New York, 14526, requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to lolly front porch roof portico with less front setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 153 Hyelich Drive. Property is currently or formerly owned by Lisa A. Whirl and is owned R-1-15, SBL number This is application number 22Z-0018.
Okay. Is anybody here on this application? All right. Let's go to number three. I think that's the cell tower.
Nixon Peabody LLP, 1300 Clinton Square, Rochester, New York, 14604. On behalf of Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems LLC, DBA Verizon Wireless, requests approval for a use variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow the construction and operation of a tower-based wireless communications facility, whereas Section 250-13.11-B4I of the code prohibits tower-based wireless communications facilities within the Four Corners zoning district, and an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow the tower-based wireless communications facility with less setback than required under Section 250-13.11-B7E1 of the code at 1838 Pennfield Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Pennfield Fire District and is owned Four Corners, SBL number 139.06-2-49.1. This is application number 22Z-0019.
Okay. If we can get your names and addresses for the record, please.
Good evening, members of the board. Jared Lusk with Nixon Peabody, representing Verizon Wireless.
Mike Crosby, Verizon Wireless RF Engineer.
And with me in the sweater in the front row is Jackie Bartolot, also with Verizon Wireless Real Estate Consultants Consulting Firm, Tectonic.
Okay. Is anybody from the Fire District here, or do you anticipate anyone from the Fire District being here?
They haven't been at other meetings. I don't anticipate them being here.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Good evening, members of the board. Again, Jared Lusk with Nixon Peabody. By application, initial sketch plan application dated way back in December, and by formal application dated March 4, 2022, Verizon Wireless applied to the town for the necessary zoning approvals to construct and operate a wireless telecommunications facility to be located at the Pennfield Fire District Station Number One, 1838 Pennfield Road. I know maybe some of you have seen our presentations on, to other boards, or our sketch plan meeting, but to say that this site is a long time coming is an understatement. We began looking for this site, for a location for this project as early as 2015, back when I had much darker hair, and it's, in searching for a project location, I practically pulled our hair out with regard to this. So it's been a long time coming. We were able to reach a lease agreement with the Pennfield Fire District. It was a matter of going back to them a number of times. There were several noes before there was a yes, and we were essentially desperate to locate a project in this vicinity. Again, we applied, we got a couple of housekeeping items this evening. Again, we began our first meetings with the town back in November. As you know, there's the FCC has a shot clock that it's 150 days for new towers. We just need to be, I know we're all working diligently through many levels of process here, and expect that the zoning board's not going to make a decision this evening, given the volume of information and the fact that Mr. Mancuso was just retained, but we are going to need at least an agreement from the ZBA to extend the shot clock. The shot clock expired on April 4. We need to, we either need to make action in the form of a court case to challenge that, or we need to extend it. We're not interested in getting a court case, so we want to extend it out about 60 days through, until to June 1, if that's permissible by this board to allow us to continue to deliberate and do the process. So we'll last.
The answer to that, as far as I'm concerned, is yes. If we have to draw up some documents.
Do we need to do a formal vote on that? I think we probably should.
Yeah, we want to have something for the zoning board to adopt that would just reflect the mutual agreement of the parties to extend the shot clock period to a date that's mutually agreeable.
We can take a vote right now, if you like, or if you guys want to draw something up and see it and circulate it.
If you have your June ZBA date, that would be, probably be the most appropriate, right? It gives us a couple more months to be able to extend that out.
That would be the, well, the 16th of June, 3rd Thursday?
3rd Thursday.
Yeah, so the 16th of June is this board's.
That probably makes the most sense, just from a practical perspective, to do that.
Okay.
Do you want to do the 17s?
Yeah. Like I said, yes, whatever, yes. Close the business on the 16th, 17th, whatever you prefer.
All right. All right. So with me is, I take it that that's the agreement, then?
Yeah, again, you want us to take a vote right now? I'll make a motion that we agree to extend the statutory deadline from whatever it was, apparently before tonight's meeting, which is, you know, it's a little bit of pressure on us to decide something before it's in front of us. But, okay, to the date just put on the record by council, June 16 or?
17.
17.
June 17, 2022, based upon the mutual agreement of the applicant and the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion to do that in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And just for the record, Verizon Wireless concurs as well. And with me is Mike Crosby. Mike is, lives in Webster, he's one of your neighbors, and is responsible for the Verizon Wireless network in the Monroe County. And so we brought him to the planning board, and we want to have him give you a brief explanation of why we're doing what we're doing, and then I'll briefly describe with you, review information that's in the application that was sent to you, but again, highlight our efforts to locate a tower in the Four Corners area. So, Mike, I'll turn it to you to drive the laptop with regard to your presentation.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, but at some point, what I, I'm going to ask John to do before we get through the technical stuff is to just lay out for the board the standards that are applicable here to the two requests. The first one being a use variance request, but not the typical use variance request that this board may see. A reduced standard of proof, if you will, a burden of proof for the applicant. And then, second, the area variances which are requested, whether, and the question that I'm interested in hearing an answer to, are the usual typical required standards for area variances still applicable here, or is there a reduced level for those as well? And you can both chime in on that, but at some point, because I've been forgetting things tonight, I didn't want to forget that. So I'm sorry to interrupt you, but feel free to go ahead and start.
And just to clear that up, our position on the applicable legal standard is outlined in Tab C of our application, so obviously Mr. Mancuso can advise you on his view of that as well.
Okay.
Just turn it over to Mike. Again, we realize you have a full agenda, so a relatively brief discussion this evening.
Sure. I heard you loud and clear that you've read all the materials, so obviously I just wanted to give a cursory review of some of the key points, because I believe that certain points are probably going to carry over in our conversations, and we'd like to just try to introduce some of those topics. What we have on the screen here is we have what we call RF justification, that's radio frequency justification. What drives the need for new cell sites? When we, as engineers, reviewing the performance of our network, decide on a location or create a search area for a new solution, what we're looking at is, from a purely RF standpoint, just purely how the network performs, and purely where the traffic is coming from. It's not based on municipal boundaries, not based on any type of, you know, specific zoning requirements. That's what we have to navigate through the process. So what's driven us to this location is that we operate a series of sites that we show on the map around this area, and geographically, to the north is the Atlantic and Wayland Site, to the east is Harris Hill Site, and then to the south, the Fairport Site in Perrington, and to the west, southwest, is the Lindenave Site. Those sites are important to take note of, because as we talk through the justification of the site, there's two components here. One is these existing sites are currently serving the area, and these sites are all relatively far away from the area in question, which is the area of what we call our Pennfield DT project area. That particular area is currently served primarily by Verizon's lower frequencies. These lower frequencies are narrower in bandwidth, they're very good in the sense that they can cover long distances, they're not as beneficial in the sense that they have the narrower bandwidth, so they don't have as much capacity capability. Verizon also operates higher frequencies, we call them mid-band, and those are going to be critical in our discussions. These AWS carriers have much wider bandwidth available, but because of the higher frequency, they don't propagate as far. That's a challenge for us when the sites are too far away from the area where the traffic is being generated. So these area sites we've mentioned, these four sites, they're currently providing coverage to the area, primarily on low band, a little bit of mid-band, so we have a gap in mid-band from the existing sites, and we're overloaded on the low band from the existing sites. So it's a two-part problem. It's a coverage on the mid-band and capacity on the, it's actually capacity on both low band and mid-band. So the intended solution is designed to be centrally located to the area that's generating the traffic, and that is deficient in its service area. And so we create a search area, and that search area is bounded by a geographic area that it needs to be centrally located and strategically located in to achieve the objectives. We've looked, and we know that one of the questions we'll have is, you know, what alternatives do we have to this particular solution? So as engineers, we have a toolbox filled with lots of different sized tools, different form factors that we can provide solutions, and we've looked at, we've looked at different scenarios. Could we do small cells? Could we do a single macro? Could we do multiple macros? And what we've found is that due to the limitations on existing infrastructure in the area, the small cells, which would be throughout the residential communities, would create a number of invasive projects that would likely, you know, have a lot of opposition to those. We know that from experience in other areas. We do this frequently, and oftentimes, when there is existing infrastructure available, we try to utilize that first, so that we're not having to come in and build something new. In this case, we have, the fire department property is available to us in the search area. It's centrally located, it's strategically located to allow us to provide the new service and evenly distribute that traffic, so that we can not only fix that Four Corners district, but also the residential areas around it. What's really important as part of that discussion is, what we're fixing is not just the service area of the new site. That is, of course, the leading point, the leading primary objective, is to fix the area that the new site's going to serve. But what happens when we provide the new service, the new site, is it actually displaces, it offloads those neighboring sites that we talked about earlier that are currently overloaded. When we do that, that actually helps to elevate a community-wide area, as opposed to just, we're not just fixing just this service area, this project area. It's, that is going to be fixed, but it's also going to elevate, it's going to improve the performance of the surrounding area for a more community-wide benefit.
So I think, let me just summarize what, Mike's very thorough, and I know in the interest of time.
And I understood about a third of what he said.
That's not bad.
Like every, like every.
I got it. It was good.
Like every municipality that started putting cell towers up in the 80s, they said, put the cell towers out in the far rural areas, and away from the villages, in this, the Four Corners area, in every municipality. And so when you look at the Pennfield area, the downtown areas we're talking about, there's currently three macros serving this area. Each one of these sets of triangles is a macro site that you see here. All right, that's the East Rochester, that's the Atlantic and Wayland, and this is the Harris Hill Site. You all know probably from living here exactly where those towers are. These triangular depictions here are the directions of the antennas. Each one of these towers has three sectors on it, each of about 120 degrees, that gets you the 360, Alpha, Beta, and Gamma, right? As you can see here, the lovely Four Corners area of Pennfield that we've all that grown up around here, is being served from all these areas, nothing in the middle. And that's worked for a long time, but now as traffic has increased, demands different frequencies, as he described, the need, there's a need to start putting these towers closer to where the users are, and you can't get away with putting them out in the South 40 to serve the population area. And so what Mike has done here, it doesn't take our RF scientist, or rocket scientists, I would say, to figure out that these are in a basic triangle, and we're in the middle of those areas. The traffic's here, as Mike said, we might be able, in theory, you could, might be able to put it here or over here, but again, these are residential neighborhoods. And if you go back to the Pennfield code, the first priority is a co-location, and we'll talk about that in a moment, that there aren't, you all know that there's not any 120-foot, there's not a cell tower that we could co-locate on in the Four Corners area, nor is there a building that's tall enough to be able to co-locate on. But just as importantly, because we've spent seven or eight years searching for this, we considered small cells, which are those things that I know you approved, or the town approved at least one of them down near Panera Plaza on a utility pole around 50 feet in the air. They're about the size of a five-gallon pail on top of a utility pole. The issue, of course, is you've got all these surrounding neighborhoods. We could put them, but a lot of the utilities are underground here, so you're going to go now in a neighborhood, dig a hole, put a utility pole up, and you're going to have now infrastructure in residential neighborhoods. Your code first prefers installing these on municipal property. So again, we'll talk about it in a moment. We focused on the Fire District, and in the search ring, as you'll see, is also the Pennfield Central School District. They were, just to be clear, a hard no at various locations. So again, that's what we're doing. Uh-oh, I did something. Oops, sorry. I'm not, so we'll get through here, just to show you, why don't you continue to drive here?
Yeah, I'm going to.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, to the everyday user of a cell phone in the Four Corners area, what are they experiencing now, and how will that change based upon this poll going up?
Maybe this picture will be able to show you that.
Yeah, so this picture does actually show, so what we do is, we have, like I say, we have capacity drivers, and we have coverage drivers, and so a portion of this RF justification talks about the capacity condition. So what's happened is, at all of these neighboring sites, we've added all the network resources available to improve and increase the capacity from those sites. As time goes on, as usage increases, as the type of usage of our system diversifies and becomes, you know, exponential, it is a logarithmic scale of utilization over time. These network resources are finite, they're limited. We reuse them as much as possible, and so in order to. And so in order to alleviate the issues that are existing right now, which are in the form of slow throughput, failed call attempts, some of these sites are overloaded to the point where, you know, if there was an actual emergency in an area, the network would not be prepared to be able to handle that type of utilization because it's already exhausted. So we're in a situation as a public utility where, in order for us to solve this problem, we can't add any additional resources to the existing infrastructure. That's what we've been doing for more than 10 years. But now we're at a point in time, as Jared had mentioned, you know, years ago, the phones used to be anywhere from six tenths of a watt to three watts, which used to allow us to get, you know, upwards of 10 to 20 miles radius out of a cell site. We used to cover huge, large areas. But the problem is, is the number of users on the network has increased significantly. There's only so much spectrum available to be able to handle that capacity. So the cell sites had to get smaller in order to handle that, and the technology had to evolve. And as the technology evolved and the capacity increased, the handsets, the UEs also changed, and the power is much lower. It's a very, very low-power system. It's not designed to go 10 miles anymore. Reality is, is in some of ours, depending upon the type of site, if it's a small cell, it might only, some of our small cells only go a few hundred feet. Some go a half a mile, some go a mile. A site like this is designed to service roughly a mile area around it. It's not a very big site. It's actually a relatively modest-sized site. It's just tall enough to get above the trees, which we call clutter, and be able to serve the surrounding area, which is this particular project area.
So another, Mike is saying, to use the traffic analogy, we've sort of timed all the intersections to the best that we can, and now we're at the point now that we need to add a new traffic light to control traffic. There is no other spacing to get things out. So again, I think this picture will help describe it as well.
So this basically shows the existing sectors that we talked about earlier that are already overloaded, the sectors that serve the area. You can see that by color coding, and then you can see when the new site is added. Again, it's relatively a modest-sized site in the center of this area. And it does, I should mention that these particular maps are what we call best server maps. This is to give the viewer the idea of where, which cell site you're on in a particular geographic area. It's not an indication of cell signal strength. The signal strength is actually these following slides, where you can actually see a color-coded chart that shows you, you know, these areas in green are stronger signal areas. Those are areas we're going to have better in-building coverage. The areas in the yellow and the brown, the signal starts to get weaker. And as the signal gets weaker, you get low enough, we have what we call variable coverage areas. These variable coverage areas, well, the signal fluctuate throughout the time of the year, especially in the summertime when the leaves are on the trees. These are areas that we experience a lot of, you know, failed network attempts. So that's where that coverage improvement comes from. And this is actually in the good coverage band, the low, the low frequency. There's a second section here where we jump into the AWS frequencies, the 2100 bank hertz. And you can see these gaps are larger. And again, these are the frequencies that offer us this significant amount of capacity relief. So this, the difference in the existing network, what we have today versus what we'll have after the sites added, again, specifically to this targeted project area, is significant.
Did that answer your question?
Yes.
I have one clarification question on the emergency. You caught my attention when you said, in an emergency, you currently would not be able to provide service to the individuals in that area. To what extent are we talking about not being able to provide service?
If you were to go back in the-
The capacity chart.
The capacity, I call them the EKG. Give me a second here. In our report, in our report, you start to see these. And again, we won't look at these, these look like EKGs, like you see on TV, but if you go through a bunch of these, these reports, you'll see that the max, this is the traffic is the moving line, and the red hatched dot is the capacity. So depending on what each person's doing on a tower, if they're just sending a text, you know, it can handle blips. If somebody, you know, the more demand, depending on what they're doing, will create larger problems, depending on what you're doing. But he's provided you, and we don't need to review each one, but I urge you on Tab F of the application that we sent you, that you review that. That'll provide that.
Yeah, no, I took a look at it. What I was trying to do is interpret that in numbers of, if there's 100,000 cell users, how many would be denied service in an emergency situation?
If you were to get an accident at the corner of 440, Penfield Road and Five Mile Line Road, and you had 30 or 40 people attempting to make a call using the same sector, if you go back to that color, it's, they're at capacity, they're going to have great difficulty, 40 people at the same time getting a call through.
So if there was something that was one of the emergency broadcastings, would be impacted by that as well? Your ability to get those signals out would be impacted as well?
Yeah, so if you, this particular chart will help to try to get to that point a little bit. And what I want to explain about this is, we give different KPIs, different capacity KPIs. Each one doesn't necessarily all, you know, one could be, if, like the channels, KPI. If we're out of channels, we're out of channels, there's no more channels available. This ASEU, this is a scheduler. The scheduler has a finite ability to schedule calls into the system. And when you have weak service on our network, as we do in this area, it puts extra strain on the network to try to keep repeating, to try to keep scheduling a user. And so that's one of the reasons why you'll actually see our low-band services overloaded in this particular area. This chart, as Jared started, is mentioned, there's two different lines, or first, it's three different lines. There's 100% capacity utilization line, which is a red dash line. And then the line that's above that, anything above that, we're already above 100% utilization during our busy hour per day. Okay? So it's not every moment of every day. Capacity is forecasted based on busy hour. So you have to plan for the busiest times of your day. This low band shows that we're hundreds of percent utilization during busy hour. We still have spare capacity on the mid-band, which is the darker red line, which is actually below the 100% utilization line. The problem with that is, so we have spare capacity on that sector. The problem is, it can't reach the area in question because it just simply can't serve that far. So the new site is designed to provide that additional capacity relief in that particular area. The exact form factor of every call failure could be different, and it varies throughout the time of day. But one last point on this. When we started this project seven years ago, we used to use capacity charts that forecasted capacity exhaustion. We'd say, here's the chart, here's our traffic trend, a year from now or two years from now, we're going to be exhausted. We need to get the site zoned, approved, and built before that happens. That was the standard for a long, long time. We're so far behind, we're not using those forecast charts. These are act, this is a year's worth of actual utilization in the last year, leading up till today. So this is already past where that 100% utilization takes place.
The way that you were just describing it, the Linden Ave, it's under capacity, but it's just not strong enough to reach the Four Corners. Could you build that one bigger and have it reach the Four Corners? Assuming you were able to go and get approvals for all that.
It really wouldn't make a difference for the mid-band. If it was low-band only, we were trying to serve a larger area, yes, to answer your question, that would be possible to get a larger footprint out of it. But that low band's already overloaded. The mid-band being that higher frequency, the higher the frequency, in this case, 2 gigahertz, the shorter the wavelength. The shorter the wavelength, the faster that signal is degraded over time. So whether we put the antennas at 150 feet or 250 feet, it's still really going to have roughly the same footprint. It's just, it can't travel that far. And that's the, that's the most critical frequency that we need to get into this area.
Okay. Does anybody have any more questions, you know, on the technical nature of this before we get into other aspects?
I did want to show you-
Yeah.
The, not with the RF, because I think we've provided, and again, there's plenty. I urge you to read F, and each, he's provided you that capacity graph for this, each of the sectors that are serving this Penfield downtown area. So you can say, you can deal with that. The next is our site selection process, and that, this is why we're doing it. And then I'll tell you, this other document, if I can open it, is Tab G in your application.
Yeah, and let me interrupt you before we get into that. I just want to make, on the technical nature of the presentation that Mr. Crosby just made, I'm going to recommend, when we're done with the presentation, that we hold open the public hearing and that we table this matter to allow this board to engage an outside consultant that, no offense, but can review your work, because it is highly technical, and can comment on that and may very well conclude, you know, he's done a great job, his conclusions are reasonable, et cetera, et cetera. Now, I know we have a time limit, so we're going to have to move quickly on that, and we will explore whether that's feasible to begin with, and it may not be. I'm hoping it will be because this is an important matter, obviously, but it's highly technical in nature as well. So I just wanted to put that on the record right now before we get into the other less technical aspects of your application. So go ahead, Jared, sorry.
All right. So again, this is why we're doing what we're doing. And Mike said, for us to do this, he gave a geographic area. Now, this is nice and round, and what happens is, is Mike and his team, this has been going on so long that there was, I think, maybe one or two of Mike's colleagues that started this.
At least.
Yes, and Mike, Mike was the lucky, lucky one standing when we actually were able to come and come with an application. But this is the search ring. And again, it is, as Mike said, we don't, he doesn't know anything about zoning districts, he doesn't know anything about historic districts, he doesn't know anything about anything other than, if I'm going to relieve those, those three surrounding sites and put the strategically located, I need to be here in this vicinity. And Jackie and her team are then responsible for going out and identifying potential locations, reviewing your code. So let's just do a little background here. Obviously, here's Route 441, Five Mile Line Road, and here are the neighborhoods, and I forgot the names, and I have them listed on the next page. But we've got the Finney School, the former high school. We've got the existing high school. We've got the Penfield Fire District here. And again, we're trying, I'm sorry, it's right here. And this is the church. And so we had a very sort of limited geographic area that we need to be in. And so if I were to scroll down, you'll sort of see the area that we looked at. And again, we scrubbed this, we called scrubbing it multiple times over a seven-year period. So we've got the Finney School, we've got the church, we've got the, et cetera. We even looked at the, this is outside the search ring. Again, municipal property, Penfield's did a hard no. So this is Penfield School District property over here. But you'll know, notice, every time we sort of get outside of this ring, we start getting into residential neighborhoods in particular, even if we can meet setbacks, et cetera, here, we were right next to homes here. And this is, there's potential environmental issues with this site since it's been a bus garage since years and years, and we had concerns. But again, Penfield School District said, no, I'm going to scroll up now to give you a site-by-site analysis. Remember now, your code, meaning Penfield's, is just like many other codes, it says, find it, try to find a co-location. That ring, you saw that? I think we can all agree from living here that there's no 120-foot, not even much more than a 30 or 40-foot building in there. Some, the planning board asked about co-locating on the roof of the fire district, just too short, doesn't get over the trees, et cetera, in the surrounding area. So it left us with potential raw land, meaning tower locations. So the first site that we talked about here is the Williams property located, and again, this is a home, 1861 Penfield Road. And there was initial interest from the landowner, but again, we go back to your code, it's, sorry to keep scrolling around, but A is here.
Can we do a split screen, Andy? Is there any way to do that? All right.
A is here?
Yep.
Right, so we're across the street, but again, we're in a residential area. He was interested. But again, your code says municipal property first.
But by the way, that's a preference.
It's a hierarchy.
That's not mandated, that's not required, it's a preference.
Well, again, it all depends on how you want to describe it. If we were to come in with a residential, that many municipalities say, well, how come you're not on the municipal property?
Absolutely.
Here, again, we're adjacent to the, to the neighborhood, et cetera.
Yeah, I get it. Every site's going to have its own unique issues, but I just, you know, you've said it throughout your application, and it's accurate, that the, our code does say, co-locate municipal property, but again, it's not required, it's not mandated, it's a preference.
But to be clear, to put the proper, the tower on that site, we would still need to use variance.
Get it.
Right? So it's not a permitted use there.
Well, you may not need area variances. You may not. Who knows?
Could be, could be, depending on where it is.
Right.
Penfield School District, the bus garage, again, just to state, the school district, in a telephone conversation on June 29, 2015, said absolutely not. That's how far along ago we asked, we've been searching. Next was the First Baptist Church, and again, historic property. And again, there was some interest, again, but next to the church, historic properties, again, and we, not a municipal property, so we pursued.
I hate to ask you this, but can you go to the map on that? I want to make sure I know where that is.
It's right next to the firehouse.
Oh, okay.
That's the one that I originally said was the firehouse, but it's not. It's D is in Delta, right in the middle.
Okay.
All right.
Now, you say the property, in your papers, the property owner was initially interested. Are they still interested?
I'd have to turn to Jackie.
We had a rule, we ruled out.
They're going to say they can't hear you without the mic. I'm sorry.
You can come up to the next table.
That one's working. And go ahead and just tell us your name again for-
Jackie Bartolata with Tectonic Engineering, and I'm site acquisition for Verizon. So although they were interested, the issue is with the property is that it is in the historic district and is a historic building. And so the, we consulted with Verizon's regulatory group, who works with SHIPBO, and they asked us not to go there for those reasons.
They, meaning Verizon?
Well, they're regulatory experts who work with, with the state Historic Preservation.
Sure, but it wasn't the church that said, we're not, we don't want you.
No, it was not.
Ultimately, it was Verizon's decision.
Correct, because of the historic nature.
Yep. Okay, thanks.
And it wasn't municipal property again, in the hierarchy.
Yep.
Next, was the Charles Finney School? They said no. Michael Ross was a residential, I'm speaking into the mic. Michael Ross residential on 1878 Penfield Road, he actually spoke at the first planning board meeting that we were here. He was initially interested, I believe, based on comments we received at the, in the hallway leaving in consultation with his wife, that there's no longer an interest in, in any way whatsoever with the tower at their home.
It's also in the historic district.
Next was the Penfield Fire District, as we talked about. And that was, again, multiple, oh, I'm going the wrong way, sorry. Multiple attempts over the seven years, and they finally agreed, but they said, if we're going to allow the tower on the property, it's going to be in the, this location and this location only. It's our only place, so hence the reason for the setback variances.
So I have a couple of questions about this, and thank you for laying this effort all out specifically. It is helpful. If you had your choice of everything other than B, just that question, you had no limitations where you could put it, where would you, where would you put it?
Well, the closest, the closest point to where the driving traffic would be, which is the proposed location.
Okay.
That would be our preferred.
All right. And would every other one of those do the job?
What happens is, as you move around within the search area, they're not all equal. And so it causes a couple of different things to happen. Oftentimes, you know, because of the height of, say, 120 feet works at one location, you might need 150 feet in another location. It also causes us to have an overloading of one sector versus, when you're strategically positioned central to the traffic source, we're able to evenly distribute the traffic on the three sectors that Jared had mentioned earlier. That helps us to try to provide the longest length or life cycle of that site before additional capacity resources are necessary, meaning additional sites in one form or another. If we get off-centered, what ends up happening is we end up overloading one of those sectors, and that will more rapidly exhaust the site, and it will cause us to have to build additional sites sooner to our proliferation, so.
Yeah, okay. I think I get that. The reason I'm asking the question is, you know, we have your written application listing all these sites, and Jared's gone through it and say, okay, here's the reason why we're not going there. And a lot of what I'm reading doesn't seem to have much, if anything, to do with technical issues. It's more, the guy decided he didn't want it after all, or it's in a historic, which are legitimate reasons, but they're different than technical reasons. Hence my question to you about, if you had your druthers, you've answered- you had your druthers, you, you've answered that. But did, did you guys go to the point where you analyzed each of these other locations and said, okay, it could work there, assuming the property owner would allow it, and we got approvals, but it'd have to be 150 feet instead of 120? As opposed to just saying that now, which I get. But did Verizon go through each one of these and do that level of detailed analysis?
So a little transparency into our process.
Yeah.
We've, we very strongly guide our real estate teams to fully vet the candidates to make sure that we've got a viable path forward before we put that engineering time into each location.
It costs money and time to do.
There's a lot of time involved. It's mostly time. It's not as much about the money. It's really time. You know, so we do push back on that to not get into, we call them the unlimited hypotheticals. It can be a black hole for time. So what we try to do is we just try to make sure that what we're working on has a path forward before we put that time into those locations. Comes down to the time. And.
I'm going to take that as a no, but an understandable no.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Do you have more to talk about these individual sites?
No, no. I think that's, I didn't want to take up too much of your time.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
But that's basically, understanding where we need to be in our, in our analysis of the, of the locations.
So on, on this issue.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I did have one brief follow-up question on this.
Sure.
Before you move on. On the school district property, you indicated the phone call was in 2015. Was there any additional communication with the district since that time? Because we obviously were talking, you know, seven years, almost.
Not that I've had.
I, I would have to, I don't have that detail with me, but I do think there was another time, not in the last couple of years, but also working with schools over the last couple of years who have been busy with COVID. They haven't been very easily reachable with other items. But I do believe there was one time since then where we had reached out again. And we can follow up with that and with the name. And I know it's the same supervisor, and the people that we worked with are the same, or I'm sorry, superintendent.
Same superintendent.
Superintendent.
Yeah. Well, you know, again, it's likely going to be tabled tonight. So to the extent that you would come in there in a month and say, hey, by the way, we checked, and all the noes are still noes. That's up to you whether you want to do that. But I, I don't know how much you can get into the negotiations, the discussions or not. If, for whatever reason you can't, I do have some questions about the individual properties in that regard. And so let me just ask one. And if you need to talk with Jared, so be it before you answer, or you can even hold the answer until next time. But Charles Finney, your notes here say the school was initially interested in leasing and ultimately opted not to proceed.
Correct.
Do we, do we know why?
Yes, we did get an email from them in probably a year or two years ago, I believe, after they'd initially interested, said that they had just re-looked at their use of the property and their plans, and talked to some more people involved with the school, and had changed their mind. And that I do believe, we have that in writing, I believe.
Okay. Again, it's up to you whether you want to submit that. But not that I don't believe you, but totally up to you in that regard. And I guess the same thing for Michael Ross. Jared was pretty clear about why that happened, and I get that as well.
That was, it was also mainly the, being in the historic district.
Yeah.
Because even if Verizon could get your local approval and get a lease, if we can't get all the federal agency approvals, then we can't move forward anyway.
Right.
The Baptist, we did submit to SHIPPO. SHIPPO has signed off on the location of the Fire District. Their inquiry with us was, send, take photos from the Baptist Church. And so when we did our simulations and submitted them, we had to provide the simulations of the view of the tower from the Baptist Church.
Oh, I see. When you say from the Baptist Church, you mean while standing in the church property.
Yes, in the view of that, yes.
Okay, I get that.
And looking, looking towards the church, yeah.
Yeah.
And so obviously Ross is right next door. I'm.
Okay. So first of all, I want to make sure that you're aware of the letter that this board has received from our, our historic board. And just, you don't need to comment on it. I just want to make sure that you have it.
Yes.
You may comment on it if you like, but.
It's hard to comment because they, they've indicated that there are alternative locations. But again, we've explored the alternatives for eight years. They didn't, when I asked the, the planning office if there were any, any actual list of alternatives that they had suggested, the answer was they didn't provide any. Again, you, you see it, you see the ring. I don't know where, what they're suggesting, but as far as we're concerned for, we wouldn't spend eight years scrubbing the site if there was an alternative that was viable.
Yeah, it's, the, the letter speaks for itself. It's in the record. But my recollection of reading it is there weren't other sites suggested. So I'd like, first of all, a question occurred to me when we're going through this, and I'm not suggesting this, but I just, I'd like to know, does Verizon as a public utility have the authority to exercise eminent domain?
We do not.
Okay. The utility pole, five-gallon drum situation, I think there's one near Panorama Plaza?
Correct.
Depot by the bank.
Yeah. So tell me a little bit more about that. And maybe you, you need to chime in a little bit on this, too. How many of those five-gallon drums would we need? What, how they would be held, suspended? I, I, you guys are saying that's not an alternative, and I hear you. But I'd like a little bit to, to know why that's the case, other than what you've already said, and that's, oh, because now we have six requests for you. That I understand. And we may have, as I said earlier, each location is going to have its own issues. But I'm just, you know, it seems to me that a telephone pole with a five-gallon drum, even six of them, may be a little less visual impact than a tower in the middle of the forum. Maybe I'm wrong.
It's a very reasonable assumption.
Okay.
So there's really a couple of parts to this. The first part is that what you're describing is what we refer to as a small cell.
Okay.
Small cells and macros, the macros what we've applied for, are not capable of providing the same types of services. Meaning, small cells by nature have many limitations associated with them. One of the limitations that's critical in this case is the amount of equipment that can be located in that five-gallon drum, so to speak. So you have a very small antenna. It's very low gain, very small footprint, and a limitation of how much radio equipment can be associated with that antenna and with that location. We're not able to provide all of our different licensed bands of service from the small cells. So what happens is the small cells are able to provide a small fraction of our total capacity capability to an area. And so without having a macro that's properly serving the area first, so this is sort of putting the cart before the horse, what we need to do here is we need to provide the macro service. And then going forward in the future, small cells would be a perfect way for us to be able to complement that existing macro service. But we're missing that, that fundamental structure in this particular area in order for us to get to that point. As far as the number of sites would be concerned, considered, it would be at least a dozen or more. So it's a substantial number. And I believe we'd mentioned earlier that when we looked at that as an option, what we found was that due to the underground utility situation throughout many of the neighborhoods, that would cause us to have to what we call plant a pole.
Sure.
And when you're planting a pole, it, it might only be 30, 40, or 50 feet tall, but it might as well be 150 as far as the neighbors are concerned in that area. So we know from, and we do that from time to time. And it, you know, if you're talking about the number that we're talking about here, it can be a disruptive process. So with the municipal property being available, and the ability to do it from one location and limit the impact to the community, that's why we deem that the macro, and in addition to that, the ability to provide all of the services from the macro, and then we're able to do what we call an overlay-underlay deployment, where we're actually able to underlay that service with these small cells. We're able to plant those in hotspot areas, like we have done in Panorama Plaza, and that helps to offload the macro site.
Okay. So best work when they are used in conjunction with each other, so to speak. So how far did you actually go in the analysis about, hey, we'd need about 12 of them, and here's where they would go? Did you get that far? Did you just?
We, we have plans in that nature. So, you know, I probably under-delivered on my explanation of how much engineering goes into this particular ring. And it's not that we haven't looked at any other scenarios or any of these other candidates.
Yeah.
It's really the viability when we're trying to look at alternatives as to which one becomes the primary. It's important for us to have valid candidates for us to be making those decisions off of, because there's a lot of time and effort that does go into, in the path that's set forward between legal and real estate and regulatory, there's a lot of moving pieces as part of the decisions that go into that. And that's why we try to focus on real solutions as opposed to hypothetical. But in the terms of hypothetical, we do that work as well, especially in the case, you know, of this Penfield, or Penfield DT area. So I would say that we have hypothetical plans, but they're not far enough along that they wouldn't be able to be moved around or changed. And quite frankly, they're several years old at this point. So they, it could be two dozen sites at this point, based on the amount of traffic that we're seeing on the network now, because we didn't execute on that original plan. So while I say we've looked at it, and we, we know there's at least a dozen from the previous look at that, like I say, what we're finding now is when we go back and look at legacy plans like that, it's usually significantly more than we usually thought.
Okay. And, and you know, the reason that I ask is because one of the things that we board members are going to consider is, in addition to A, B, C, D, E, F, G, are there any other methodologies that you can use? And, you know, Jared says, well, there's these, I'm going to keep calling them five-gallon drums, five-gallon drums. So is that a viable alternative? I've heard what you said. If you want to submit more on that, because we are leaving the hearing open, okay. Because right now, I'm still have that question in my mind. I'll tell you that right now.
I think it's a great topic. If you were able to bring an RF consultant on board, you know, this is a common topic that, you know, Verizon RF and the consultant, you know, usually talk through the pros and cons of those types of deployments. And each area is different. In some areas, it makes a ton of sense because there's a substantial amount of infrastructure available.
Mm-hmm.
But when there's not, which is one of the key problems here, in addition to the fact that we don't have that existing macro service in the area that's appropriate.
Sure.
So there's really multiple reasons why that's just not, you know, the foot that we're leading with here.
Okay.
The other complication here is, if you just look what's in the ring, you got the Finney School.
Yep.
And you got the Penfield High School. And you can imagine how much traffic is being generated from the wonderful children of the Finney School in Penfield. And you can't, probably can't put enough small cells along the boundary of that school to handle that traffic. And I, you know, again, I think that that's another complicating. It's not the typical, it's almost like a mall, again, you know, I don't want to exaggerate it, but the, the cellphone traffic going on at the high school, I think is probably comparable to some of them.
We should be at the point where the scenario that you're talking about, we should already have that macro on the air so that we could be coming in here today with those small cells, trying to make things easier.
Yeah, I get it.
But we're behind the times here.
We used to pass notes in high school, by the way.
Are there any other towns or local areas where we could go see what a 120-foot tower looks, or 128, I guess, when it was all done, in a village or a town setting such as this?
Sure, we could.
Because I mean, most of these that we picture are outs, like we said, out in the open where we, you know, we drive by, we see it, there is in the field. I guess, you know, places where we could actually go see and say, okay, this is what the impact looks like when you're going by.
Yeah, we'd be happy to take, take a look at our inventory and make a suggestion for the next.
Isn't there something in Webster, in the Village of Webster on the fire?
Well, you know, it's interesting, you know, there's a, there, there is the Town Hall. That's about 120 tower at the Town Hall, Webster Town Hall on Ridge Road. That used to be 100-foot tall, was called a waffle tower, which is like, it's a combination of a self-support and a guide wire tower without the guide wires. It was replaced with a 100-foot tall monopole, and then it was replaced with 120-foot tall monopoles. That's been through a couple of different evolutions as multiple wireless carriers have co-located on the Town Hall there. I believe it's 120 now. It may actually be taller than that. So we have to double-check what it's at now, because there's other carriers have gone on that tower since it's been rebuilt. So I don't know if it's been extended or not. But that is a monopole, so.
You said you had mock-ups from the Baptist church, I believe, that would show at least a visual.
Is those, can you make those available to us, those mock-ups?
They're tab and of your application.
They're in there, yeah.
Okay. God, I obviously missed that. Okay.
A follow-up on that question. You indicated that SHIPPO had issued a no-impact letter. Is that part of the materials as well?
We submitted that as well.
Okay. Is that an exhibit, or is that a separate submission?
It was.
It might have been separate. We just got it recently.
Okay.
So you mentioned height. Let me ask you a question about height. Is the height that's being proposed what Verizon needs for its own customers? Or is it a height that would allow you in the future to let other people come on? And you don't really need that height?
So what we do is, we strictly propose the minimum height necessary for Verizon. But that has no limitation on other wireless carriers being able to co-locate on the tower.
Oh, okay.
They certainly are able to, the tower is built to handle co-location. Would they have the same level of service if they're at a lower elevation? It's hard for us to say, because they don't use the same equipment, the same antennas, power could be different. Their utilization or their network could be different. There's, there's so many differences between each wireless carrier that it, it wouldn't be fair for us to make a judgment as to whether that would be appropriate for them or not. We would only be able to say that it is capable of co-location, and it would be available for co-location.
Sure. But you're, you selected a height based upon Verizon's usage. All right.
Verizon, just to, you know, I could get the exact numbers on this, but roughly 50% of the wireless subscribers in the Monroe County area are on Verizon's network, which means we have the lion's share of the subscriber base. So it's, it's, it's normal and customary for us to be the first ones doing something like this. And it would be sometimes a month later, sometimes years later, before the other wireless carriers might have that same need. Or they might be someplace before we are, depending upon what their needs are. So it's not unusual for us, though, to be in a situation where we're, we're coming in trying to build something specific for our needs.
Okay. We have any more questions on the site selection?
No.
Elimination? Okay. So at this point, then, I just, I want to ask the, the question. And if you want to reserve your answer to this, that's okay. But I, I want to make sure we're all aware of the difference between the use variance standard, typical one, the one that's being requested tonight, because they're a public utility, it's a reduced standard that they have to meet. I think that's a fair summary, but I'll let you do that. And then again, the question I posed before about the area variance requests, are we to apply the typical standard there, or is it also a reduced standard because they're a public utility?
You're asking me that question?
I'm asking both of you. You don't have to answer now. I said, if you want to submit something in writing, you can. But I.
And I can, if you wish for me to provide the board what, what I believe the standards governing this board are, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah. At, at some point, you know, we're, I, I don't need you guys to recite that now, but if you could give us, I want to make sure we're applying the, the right standard. And maybe you have different opinions. That's okay, too. But so I'll give you the opportunity to admit something in writing and, you know, ask you to do it.
We, we have provided it at tab C of the application.
Yeah. But I don't think that addressed the, my specific question about area variance.
We, we believe that that standard applies to all zoning, because if it qualifies for the use variance standard, which the seminal case was a use variance case.
Right.
If the relaxed standard is for use, it would also qualify for any other zoning approval that's to be granted. If we demonstrate that there's a need, and it is the most reasonable method for delivering that need, that in fact, the, the board can't deny the application.
Yeah. So if you, if there's any, I get the argument, if there's any legal support or precedent for that specific argument, in addition to what you've submitted, that would be great as well. Okay. How about the way that the tower is going to look? I'm sure you've been asked by planning board, can you put something that looks like a flagpole? Can you put something that looks like a pine tree?
If you look at the simulations that we provided.
Yeah.
We provided simulations. They asked about a flagpole. And again, in the interest of time, Mike described that the equipment nowadays that is, that we're, that we're using, again, just that that's the design of the equipment today, will not fit inside of a, you can't fit that equipment in a, in a, in a flagpole. Not, not going to work. He said you could, except there'd be a big barrel around, you know, as you got up closer to the top of the antenna, you wouldn't, it would look ridiculous, right? So the flagpole's not an option. The other options that we provided simulations were for a tree, a monopine. And we, we provided those views to the, those simulations to the board, again, in your packet. And those, those, we also provided differences between the typical, I would say, the galvanized steel monopole and a painted monopole. We don't really think there's any other options for, for designs of the tower, given the height that we need, and again, the small space that we're, that we've been allocated by the Fire District to be able to put up a project. We have, you, you may have seen even in the last few years, that we have put what we call bell towers, four-legged, so they look like bell towers that you would put in this, in a driveway. We don't have the space. But secondly, Mike can indicate to you that the technology now is, if we were to build those. those, the antennas would have to be on the outside wall of the thing, and you're not really creating the stealth. So they worked in a prior context of the technology, I'm speaking for you. Now they have to be, the antennas have to be on the outside. We don't have the space, and we would end up putting the antennas on the outside of those bell towers.
Yeah, which would defeat the purpose.
Yeah, so in our estimation, that the only available stealth that are reasonable, that are contextual, would be the monopine, the monopole, the standard design, or a painted monopole, and we could paint that monopole any color that people wanted. And so we had provided a gray, some municipalities had preferred what they call it, a thunder gray, it's almost like a dark gray-brown type of look. Again, that's usually in and amongst some trees that are of similar heights. Here, again, you drive up and down 441 all the time, those galvanized poles, it's the same type of pole that's holding up a traffic, you know, light the same design, that blends with the upstate gray sky at time. And again, not because we have a particular preference, but I will say that that's what most municipalities pick, because that's what ends up working better. But in this context, we just don't see, there were some views that a monopine would look okay, there were several of the views in those things that a monopines are great when you have the context of other trees around it, although it ends up not looking what people expect. And there's just not, from some views, there were some trees, and it added a little context, there were others that it just looked...
It could look silly.
Yeah.
I mean, almost, you know, like, I hope my wife is not listening, but almost like an artificial Christmas tree, compared to a real Christmas.
And it, you know, does create problems with the height, because you do, if you want the tree, you have to put the cone at the top to make it the point, and that adds some increase in the height.
Okay, are there any questions about the, sort of, the look of the tower?
No.
All right, so then, let's go to the area variance requests. And I'll just ask you simply, we've heard you say why it needs to go in the circle, and why you think this location, this address is okay. Your area variances are so that you can put the tower in a specific location on that property.
Correct.
And, you know, there are setback requirements, you're asking for permission to go into the setback. That sums it up. So why does it have to go into that particular area on the property, as opposed to a location, if one exists, by the way, that you could place it, assuming the owner allowed you to, without the need for an area variance?
I don't think you could put, I haven't done the analysis of putting it, you'll probably end up in the middle of the driveway where the fire engines are going out. But to be clear, as I stated, the fire district said, this is the only available location on the site that we will provide to you. It's out of the way, our trucks can still manage, our firefighters can still park. This was the only available site. So again, after searching for seven years, have it being the only available site.
Well, I tell you, if they submitted that, if they would submit that in writing, that's honestly why I asked before whether anyone was here, especially if it's based on safety and the trucks being able to move in and out, you know, to me, that would be a...
I can do that, because I know I've talked to them about that recently, we discussed it, and the ingress and egress patterns that come in from Five Mile Line, and I can get that in writing.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes people say, oh, I want to put it here, because it's going to look nicer, or I want to leave this area open. If it needs to go there for safety reasons, or anything like, whatever the reason is, it'd be nice, and maybe we do have to hear from...
I think it's important also, from the aesthetic perspective, to recognize what the fire district and/or, I don't know whose idea it was, but we have proposed as part of it, almost like a shelter-type roof over the, usually, the design of the tower with the wooden fence and the sheltered roof, it's been designed to sort of blend better, given its location. This is, there's more, there's been a great deal of thought into the design of at least the ground infrastructure, to try to make it look more appropriate for the village setting that it is. And again, the board, the planning board asked for additional landscaping on the backside of it, towards the Finney School. Again, we worked with the fire district, they've okayed, we've proposed some additional landscaping on the backside of it from the visible, you won't see it from 441 or Five Mile Line Road, given everything that's between that. But from the Finney side, again, there's been, it's been thoughtful to make this not the standard cell tower compound at the base of the tower, just to be clear, and so...
Can you put something up that has the, I guess, site location, or, and so we can just kind of take a look at the variance requests, and, other than what you've just told us, if you think that there's any particular need on any specific variance, and then, of course, these folks may have some questions, too.
I'm sorry to scroll.
By the way, if anybody listening at home has any comments, you can call 340-8771, or go to Penfield.org and submit a comment through the website.
I think page eight had a blown up, yeah, that one.
This one here?
Mm-hmm.
Zoom down a little bit more.
Okay. So you can see that, again, it's a wooden fence, this isn't the most up-to-date code, because I didn't realize it was going to be used by lap, or planned, but we have proposed, not a lot of space here, some trees right along the backside of this, as requested. But again, here's the tower, here's the compound within the fenced-in area, if I can, I think, scroll down and show you what I meant, what I said. It's hard to, here it is. So that's a roofed-in, sort of, comp over the top of the radio cabinets. Again, all the radios are in cabinets at the base of the tower. Here are the cabinets, looking down.
We're calling it a pavilion.
Yeah, I guess that's the right word, sort of a pavilion.
If you scroll down more, it's got the side view, too, as opposed to the, or the front view, as opposed to the side.
I don't know if I'm doing this.
Keep going, you're going the right way, yeah, right there.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That gives you a little more of a...
Okay.
Looks like a pavilion with vending machines.
Refrigerators.
Okay.
Again, there's a fence, you're not going to see the equipment even in there, because there's going to be a, I think it's a seven-foot fence.
Okay.
Wooden fence, not even chain link.
Yeah, could you go back again to the site plan that has it in the corner? And let's just make sure that we know specifically what the area variance requests are.
Variances, I'm sorry to help this zoom.
Yep.
Variances are the setbacks from these two property lines.
Okay. And what is the proposed distance for the setback to the north?
It is, I'm sorry, I have to, it's a...
Andy, if you know, you can...
I have it at seven feet, because we have to measure per code, we have to measure to not only the tower, but the accessory equipment. So I kind of scaled it off on the map, and it turned out to be seven feet.
So seven feet, when the code says how many feet?
200.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I thought it was the tower that was, that was the measure.
It's the tower and its accessory equipment.
Yeah, that's a matter of feet. So even if it were just the tower, instead of seven, it'd be, what, 12, 15, 18, whatever. And how about to the east? Is that also 200 feet?
It's 200 feet to every, all property lines, yes.
Okay, so, and you're asking?
33 there.
33, all right. So my point in bringing that out is just to say out loud, what you know, that these are substantial area variance requests. If that's the only place you can go on the property, that's the only place you can go. Again, helpful to get that in writing from the fire district. But, you know, how much would it affect their operations to move it 10 feet to the south, or 6 feet to the west? I'm just throwing numbers out. Because we are, you know, unless the standard is reduced, because you're a public utility, we are supposed to grant the minimum variance that would allow the structure to work. And by the way, to get back to technical for a minute, if we put that tower right in the middle of that parking lot, and we didn't have the issues of fire truck, I'm assuming it would work the same as if it were in the corner?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Anybody else have any questions on the area variances?
No.
I have one follow-up question, and I don't know, Andy, if you might have looked at this also, to the south, we're at 121, give or take?
Yeah, and actually, variance is required from the north, east, and south property lines.
So all three, okay. All right, well, that makes sense, that makes sense. Anything else? I don't want to cut you off, but I, all right, let me ask anyone in the audience care to speak about this application?
Actually, I've got one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there not a concern for a structure that's 128 feet to fall, out 128 feet?
They don't fall...
Some freak reason?
Yeah, they don't, they don't fall like trees. We provided a design letter that indicates the structural standard that it would be built to, and that's provided as tab M. We will design the tower to fall the minimum height that the engineer will design it, and they'll go through that process of building in, building in failure points of the tower, that if it were to fail, that it would, it would not, it would fall, collapse on itself.
So it would stay on its own footprint?
Yes.
Okay, good, that was a very good question. Anybody in the audience? Again, I don't see any electronic submissions. Let me hit refresh one more time. Somebody says, please move on, I'm waiting for over an hour. Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
It's probably someone out here.
And I don't see any electronic submissions either. Okay, as I said before, I'm going to make a motion to table for all the reasons that we discussed.
I'll second.
And leave the public hearing open. So we'll let you know whether we're going to start next time at 6:30, or do the work session first, and then go into it. So we'll let you know that, but kind of plan on being here at 6:30. All right, we have a motion to table in a second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye. Can you confirm the date of the next meeting, again?
Thursday of the month.
I don't plan that far ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Looks like it's the 19th.
Kevin Flanagan, 38 Sunleaf Drive, Penfield, New York, 14526. Requests approval for an area variance under section 250-14.3 of the code, to allow a garage addition with less side setback than required under section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 38 Sunleaf Drive. The properties currently are firmly owned by Kevin and Sarah Flanagan, and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number 109.01-2-121. This is application number 22Z-0020.
Before this application, Chairman, is the board planning on revisiting the tower for tonight, or am I excused from the remainder of the agenda?
The latter.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Unless you want to stop.
Right. He asked the question.
He sent that, he sent the electronic submission.
Wow, you're making him blush. It's not easy to make an attorney blush. Okay, so, go ahead, folks, give us your name and addresses, and then somebody will walk you through the application.
Captain Flanagan, 38 Sunleaf Drive.
And I'm his wife, Sarah Flanagan, 38 Sunleaf Drive.
Okay, thank you, thank everybody for your patience.
Yeah, thorough application, thank you. Some detailed information and site plans for that. From the understanding I have here, you guys want to put an addition on your garage, an additional garage, in a sense, but you require a variance from the side, I guess I'll call it the side yard, you have basically a triangle parcel, so I'll call it the side yard next to your driveway there, or closest to your neighbor's driveway. Looks like you want 2'5" is all you need for the side. Your parcel seems unique, it's a pie shape, and so you also have some other unique characteristics. You have a water easement on one side of your parcel, I'll call it the pie shape coming up, and then you have another deed restriction, it looks like that's maybe 25 feet plus in the rear, that doesn't allow you to build on that area as well. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so, it looks like, based on your site plan, that you've placed the garage so you, really where you can for this addition, so then it doesn't go into the rear for the deed restriction there for that area, and that leaves you really this only little, small section of the yard, so in a sense, that's why you placed it there?
It is, and I believe, based on the size of our lot, to have a detached garage, what we were looking to do wouldn't have been an option based on the size of our lot.
Correct, you probably need more, a larger setback as well.
Correct.
Okay. And then, the finishes of the garage, it'll match the house?
Correct.
Which is?
Cedar.
Cedar, so that, so it'll be cedar around, the roof will match the existing roof, it'll tie in nicely?
It will.
Perfect, that's a great picture, thank you, Andy. And so it'll stay within character of what your home is now, and it'll work with the character of the neighborhood?
It will. The front half will have the matching brick, and then the sides will be the same as the existing structure, which are cedar siding.
Okay. And then, have you spoken to your neighbor about this?
I have. The only thing I do not have currently is something in writing from him. He is, was willing to have that signed, I just, I haven't seen him, based on work schedule and COVID...
But he's okay with the application?
He is, correct.
Yeah, okay, perfect, perfect.
And that's the neighbor to the south.
To the south, with the driveway basically runs parallel right to your driveway right now.
Correct, we have that shared piece of landscape that is in to the south there, between the two driveways.
Okay. And it looks like that's probably in terms of, for your neighbors, I guess, if they were put it anywhere, that would be the spot, because it's next to his driveway, it's next to his garage, it's not something you can see from the windows of his home as well.
Correct.
Okay. Any additional lighting that will shine into your neighboring properties from the garage?
It will not.
That's all I have.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? All right, I don't have any other electronic submissions, and...
It's because we've moved on.
All right.
I promise I did not submit that.
Or phone calls, so let's go ahead, then, and move with the environmental.
Yep, I will move this type 2 action, requiring no further review under seeker.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion on the seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, on the merits of the application?
Okay, I will move that we approve this variance. Looking at the plans, the restrictions from the easements on two sides of the properties, limited area that he can actually build the garage, so I think this is the best area for that, but it does require a small variance. The variance is not substantial, at only 2'5". The garage will stay in harmony with the current home as it is, so it'll stay within character, and it won't be a detriment. And we didn't find any adverse impacts from this for the environmental, for the area as well. So on those merits, I would move to approve.
I will second that, those are all very well-stated reasons. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You, too. All right, next application, please.
Aaron Raymer, Upstate Bottle Return Incorporated, 1694 Penfield Road, Rochester, New York, 14625. Requests approval for a special use permit under section 250-14.3 and section 250-7.20-B1 of the code, to allow exterior storage containers at 1694 Penfield Road. The properties currently are firmly owned by D&amp;L Realty Incorporated, and is owned limited business, SBL number 139.05-1-53. This is application number 22Z-0021.
Hi, if you can just give us your name and address, and then somebody will walk you through your application.
Awesome, my name is Justin Polk, the Upstate Bottle Return, our address is 1694 Penfield Road.
Okay.
All right, hello, sir. How are you? I do have some questions. I, I do have some questions. Actually, the first one might, Andy might be able to answer best. So this is an LB district, right?
Correct.
How far away are these storage containers from what I assume would be a residential district just behind it?
Yeah, it's.
Because it can't, because as I read the code, it can't be less than 100 feet.
Right. And I did, I did scale off the distance, and it does exceed that.
It does exceed that, okay.
Measurement, yeah.
Okay.
So it's okay? That's not, that's?
Yeah, it's farther, it's, it's farther than it has to be, I guess. It's not encroaching into the 100-foot buffer.
We're good. We're good to go, right?
We're good.
From that perspective. Okay. And it's, it's behind these storage, I'm going to ask you the easy questions first. The storage facilities that, that you have there now are behind the plaza, so you can't see it from the road, so it doesn't? Exactly. Doesn't cause an eyesore or distraction to people driving on the road, correct? Yes, sir. They're at the very back of the parking lot in the back. Okay. Now, and, and, and they're big. I drove, I went by behind them. Why do you need them so big? So with the little storage that we have inside the store, we need a longer trailer to, because we do about, around 100,000 cans per week over at Penfield, which is around maybe 500 to 600 of the bags that are probably about this tall. So we can probably fit around about 200 inside the store without it being super crammed. So that's why we need the longer trailers in order to fit everything that we have. So if we said no, what would you do? It's a good question. We would maybe have to consider a different location, maybe something bigger, only because there's no way we can fit that many, that much volume inside of the store. Can you, let's say, lease a storage facility and drive the cans to that storage facility on a night, daily nightly basis when you close? Not exactly, because all of our manager, well, the Penfield manager does not have a, a company vehicle. So there's no possible, well, there is a possible way that we could go and grab the bags and bring them to a storage unit, but it would, it would just be easier to have them in the back of the store where our employees can just take them right after at the end of the day. So there, there was an anonymous complaint, and it's anonymous, so, but it, it, it did state concerns about broken glass, bottles, garbage, debris being around the storage facilities. And, and while it is more than 100 feet from, from the residential zone, it's still, it's still pretty close. So what are, what are you going to do moving forward to make sure that the area is in pristine condition? Yeah. So as of recently, we, we haven't been as stubborn on cleaning up back there because of the weather changes. We don't know if it's going to rain or snow, or be sunny. So the plan was to the next, if we have like a really dry week where there's no rain, that's the week that we're going to clean up everything and make sure that doesn't happen again. Okay. So but, but moving forward to make sure that it doesn't get into that state, what, what's your plan? We won't be bringing glass to the back anymore, to the back trailer anymore. Okay. So if we were to say you can have one storage instead of two, what are your thoughts on that? I think, I think that would be acceptable for, for our volume. Okay.
Can I chime in real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
If, if one trailer would work, why do you have two currently? I, I guess in a sense, you know, what's the use of it right now?
Um, so.
With one, because it's cheaper with one, I would think.
It would be cheaper with one. We have two just in case of, of busier weeks or busier months. Our competitor, Can Kings, they, they close down for weeks often. So those, for those weeks, we, we do need to use the second trailer. And it's just like once summer hits, it's just going to be super busy. So we're definitely going to be using those trailers. I know in the winter, I believe we were thinking about getting rid of one of them, but we actually had a pretty busy winter this, this winter, so we decided to keep it.
Okay. Well, it's a, it's a good question, and it's a honest answer, but what I don't want to have happen is if we say, let's go for one, and then we have a great summer, which we're all happy about, but now we have bags of bottles.
Playing outside. That's kind of.
Even if it's only for a day or two until they can get another, I'd almost rather have an empty trailer sitting out there for insurance, if you will.
And that's exactly our mindset as well.
Yeah. So, okay, well, that's just a thought, but I don't want to.
No, 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 no. I, I think I'm done.
Any other board questions?
No, I'm good.
Anybody in the audience care to speak about this?
I do have one thing to say. I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I believe the complaint was for the closer, smaller trailer. That is probably because we keep our, our glass right next to that trailer. We have things called buckhorns where we dump our glass in there. So there are some times where our, Tom, or the company that comes and picks us up, they might spill some glass from picking up a pallet or something like that. So I can definitely understand why someone would complain about that. But like I said, once it, once it gets dryer out, we're definitely going to sweep that up and make it nice and neat over there.
Yeah. And honestly, going out and checking and sweeping on a regular basis.
Right.
You know, not just when somebody sees something and tells you, you know, like, get out there every day or every other day, whatever the case.
Be part of a regular cleaning routine.
Absolutely, yeah.
I would, I mean, almost recommend we put that. Yeah, I was going to. And, and I also think that, that I'm going to condition an, an approval on it being for just one year, so that we can go back and revisit this. Because the code says it's three years unless it's, unless we do a shorter timeframe. So because of the complaint and because of the proximity of that storage to the residential zone, again, knowing that it's outside of the 100 feet, but I think at least in the beginning, we should condition on being a one year.
You want to condition it on no problems, so that they don't?
Yeah.
Apply in a year?
What's that?
Like, you know, condition it on no town code violations for the year, and then it just keeps on going for the next two, so that way he doesn't have to reapply in a year?
I don't know that we could do that. Can we do that?
I look to our.
In other words, only have to come back if there's an actual?
Code infraction.
And, and a phone call. I mean, it, it has to be a complaint that has been determined to be founded.
I mean, I would typically, if we ran into a situation where there was something that wasn't in compliance, we would call the owner and give him an opportunity to fix it. And if they did?
Yeah.
We'd consider it resolved, and no need to pursue it any further.
And I suppose if we granted a three-year one, and there was a complaint, and they didn't fix it, you could either haul them into court and haul them back into here?
Right.
And for a.
Okay. Then I'm fine with that.
Yeah, okay, cool. All right. Anything else? I kind of cut you off.
Oh, no worries. I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. So for seeker?
Yep.
I will make a motion to declare this a unlisted action and issue a negative declaration.
I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second on the environmental. All those in favor?
Aye.
And now on the merits?
So I will move to approve the application on the condition that it remain orderly, clean, that it's regularly cleaned up, no broken glass. And I, I guess that's it, because if there is some sort of issue, then we've already discussed the enforcement mechanisms.
Are we doing a three-year then?
We're going to do a three-year.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve and a second on that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you very much, guys.
Nice seeing you, but we don't want to see you back here.
Unless it's in three years.
Right, three years. We'll see in three years. Okay. Number six. I think it's six, right? By the way, anyone here on number two? I didn't see anybody come in, so.
Todd and Lauren Harrison, 71 Broham Drive, Penfield, New York, 14526. Request approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an addition with less front setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 71 Broham Drive. The property is currently formally owned by Todd and Lauren Harrison and is owned R-1-20, SBL number 124.08-1-25. This is application number 22Z-0022.
Okay, thank you. And if we could have your names and address for the record, and then Andres will walk you through this.
Lauren Harrison, 71 Broham Drive, Penfield, New York.
Todd Harrison, 71 Broham Drive.
Thank you. Once again, another thorough application here with nice drawings and everything like that from architects, so these make it a lot easier to go, to go through. My understanding from this application, you are looking for a 2.6-foot variance from the front to put a, I guess I'll call it a front entry addition on your home.
Yes.
And from my understanding, this is really the only way we can do this, because it's for your front entry, so it's the front of the house. Your home is set at the setback right now, so you require, or close to it, but you are doing a seven-foot addition and you require 2.6 feet. So you're close, but you just need that little bit extra to make the front work. I guess in a sense, that extra two feet is the difference between, you know, if you have a, if you had a five-foot addition, you need, that wouldn't be enough to have an entryway or what you're really looking for?
Yeah, the majority of the space is, the intent is to provide additional storage, and the closet that is in there on the front side of the house is 32 inches. And so to reduce the, to go back to two feet, or to go back two feet, six inches would be to largely eliminate the reason.
We don't have a coat closet at all. You know, if you took that entry off, the coat closet is 12 feet away, and it's tiny, and we've got two very active kiddos. So really the motivator for this is, I need a closet so I don't trip over my kid's shoes every day.
Well, no, I, I saw in one of the.
I understand.
That's why I sent those photos.
I get it too. That usually everything sits at the door.
I appreciate her blaming the kid's shoes. I understand.
From the photos you submitted there, it showed that, you know, you are restricted on what you can do inside, and now the whole world knows exactly what you've got going on inside there for all the millions of people viewing this.
Yep.
And so, in a sense, you need that space going out to the front, because you can't reconfigure the inside easily to make it work for yourself.
Yeah, and the seven feet was really determined because, you know, you have to add in the wall space for an addition, and that was kind of, we don't want to go any farther than that, because visually, that would just be a bizarre structure to have stick out at the front of the house, but that would give us enough space to put an adequate closet in there for the kiddos. You know, any smaller the closet would be small, and then it's a ton of money to spend when you're not getting the storage you need.
I agree. In terms of the, the look of the outside, it's going to complement the existing home, similar colors, similar materials were available to what you have right now?
We're actually doing all a new roof, new siding, new windows at the same time.
Oh, wow.
So that hopefully the whole home will look beautiful.
It'll be a perfect match then?
Yes.
Excellent. So it'll, so it won't be any dramatic, or it'll be out of character for, for your neighborhood?
No. If you were to drive down our street or the side streets, probably 90% of the homes already have a front porch of some sort. I don't know if they were additions or not, but ours is just a flat, you know, front colonial home, and so ours very much would actually fit in with what most of the homes around us have.
Perfect. And I think a neighbor at 76 on your streets there sent in a letter in support.
Yeah.
And they also claimed that this may add more value to the homes in the area. I mean, is it too soon for an assessment joke yet, or not? I don't know, sorry. But, you know, in a sense, home values will go up, so, from, from, from this. And so they are in, in support of, you know, in a sense, raising the, you know, status of the neighborhood from this. And.
Who was the author of that letter? I'd like to hear.
I don't want to make her, it's on record somewhere there.
And I also would like to dispute this photo of me taking out our recycling, because it's very.
Oh, there she is.
I know. This photo they took, Google, that's me taking out a recycling. It drives me nuts every time I look.
How often do you look at it?
I mean, enough, honestly. I've been staring at this house for six years, trying to figure out what to do with it, and at least I was not in pajamas.
And I think, that's all I've got.
Yeah. Okay. Any other board questions?
No.
No.
All right. The, the reason I asked who, who wrote it is because the comment before, I have a note here, electronic submission from Frank Mastiff. Does that name ring a bell? Now, maybe he was just kidding, but the note says, please move on. I'm waiting on PH6, which Andres tells me is public hearing six. This has been over an hour. He was making the comment about the cell tower application, but I don't see anybody on the phone, and there's nothing more on the comment than I'm reading, other than hurry the heck up.
And if you don't recognize the name, it's probably not your other neighbor.
It wouldn't be.
No, I mean, I'm, it's a very friendly neighborhood, and that's not a name of anybody directly near us.
Okay, so I'm not, I don't know how to dress this, other than thinking maybe it's Terry Tidings, and he's just using somebody else's name. Now, all that means is I'm going to get a phone call tomorrow. Okay. All right. Well, Mr. Frank Mastiff, if you want to call 340-8771, go ahead, but I, what I'm reading on the computer says, please move on. I'm waiting for public hearing six. This has been over an hour. So.
Here we are.
Yeah. Okay. All right, then. Yes, let's, let's move on to the environmental.
Sure thing. I'm going to, this is a type two action requiring no further review under seeker.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
And on the merits?
On the merits, I'm going to, this, when we go through this, it's not a substantial area variance for this at 2.6 feet. The applicant did mention the difficulties with the, the layout of the home, how, how it's constructed, it's difficult to change the insides, so it actually is more feasible to go forward towards the front of the home for, for this. And the home will match, everything will be done the same, because they're going to redo the roof, redo the siding, so it will stay within character of the home. And the neighbor is in support of it as well, and we didn't find any adverse impacts on the environment here as well. So with that, I'll move to approve.
Okay. Matt's going to second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Betsy Brug, Woods Oviat Gilman LLP, 1900 Bausch &amp; Lahn Place, Rochester, New York, 14604. On behalf of Fairlane Drive LLC, requests approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow greater lot coverage than allowed under Section 250-5.7-D2 of the code, and less parking than required under Section 250-7.7-D of the code. The applicant is also requesting approval for a special use permit for signage under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow an existing freestanding sign with less setback than required under Section 250-10.12-D of the code at 1800 Empire Boulevard. The properties currently are formally owned by EC Barton &amp; Company and is owned general business, SBL number 093.15-1-57. This is application number 22Z-0024.
Would you folks be okay if you read the next application too? I mean, they're related and just kind of deal with both of them simultaneously.
It's going to be hard to talk about one without talking about the others.
I was going to say the same thing.
Yep.
Betsy Brug, Woods Oviat Gilman LLP, 1900 Bausch &amp; Lahn Place, Rochester, New York, 14604. On behalf of Fairlane Drive LLC, requests approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a building with less front setback than required under Section 250-5.7-D3 of the code, greater lot coverage than allowed under Section 250-5.7-D2 of the code, and less parking than required under Section 250-7.7-D of the code. The applicant is also requesting approval for a special permit for signage under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow signage with greater graphics, trademarks, or logos than allowed under Section 250-10.11-E of the code, larger traffic control signs than allowed under Section 250-10.17 of the code, more building signs than allowed under Section 250-10.13-C of the code, a larger freestanding sign than allowed under Section 250-10.12-B1 of the code with less front setback, with less front and side setback than required under Section 250-10.12-D of the code at 1800 Empire Boulevard. The properties currently are formally owned by EC Barton &amp; Company and is owned general business, SBL number 093.15-1-57. This is application 22Z-0025.
All right. Thanks. And again, if we could just have names and address, and then whoever wants to start, go ahead.
Stephanie Albright with AVD Engineering at 16 Fisher's Run in Victor.
Mike McCracken with Hospitale Syracuse and Fairlane Drive, 959 Stump Roads, Gini Atlas, New York.
And I am obviously not Betsy. I am Jim Bonzinger from Woods Oviat Gilman. Betsy sends her regards. She was unable to attend tonight, but it gave me an opportunity to come back, and I haven't been here in a while, so it's nice to see.
And have the second most colorful set of glasses in the room.
I was going to make a comment that you guys were going to have the glasses on.
You can get the glasses on.
Okay. So, yeah, again, just go ahead, combine the two applications the way that you want, however. Have at it.
Okay.
Okay. So, I, I know that Betsy was very thorough with the letter of intent. That is part of the record, so I'm not going to give the usual spiel where we go through all the details of the letter of intent and go through all the specific-
Okay.
-area variance criteria. But I'll hit some of the, the highlights for you. Obviously, this is a new Taco Bell location. However, it's new, but it's not. As you know, there is an existing Taco Bell location, just a short skip up the road. This is going to be a relocation of that existing restaurant. The main reason being that this location, because of its uniqueness, kind of being shoehorned between Creek Street and Empire Boulevard, actually provides much better traffic flow in and out of the site than they have at the existing site. Likewise, because of the, the two roads of ingress and egress, it provides a safer and easier traffic flow situation for the patrons of the restaurant. So that's the, that's the main reason for the desire to, to come to this location. If you're familiar with the location, it's the existing, it's the existing discount home store, if you will. I live in the area. I live just a couple miles up Bay Road, and I drive by this location daily. I have spent way more money than I should at the Tim Hortons. That's right next door. But if you're familiar with the Home Outlet site, you know that this is existing, is a very, very low-impact site. And that's one of the reasons why originally the site was granted a parking variance from what is actually, by all regards, a, an extraordinary parking requirement, and it's due mostly because of the, the square footage of the building. But because of the nature of the operation, they don't even use a fraction of the existing parking that is permitted, let alone what would otherwise be required by the code. Likewise, with the Taco Bell use, the parking on-site is minimal, and this is a primarily drive-through business, fast-food restaurant. As, if you're, again, if you're familiar with the other site, you know, typically, at any given time, you'll see maybe six to 10 cars on-site, and the majority of the vehicles that you're going to see on-site are going to be those that are stacked in, in a drive-through lane. So, the current site is 1.9 acres. We're looking to split it in two. The Taco Bell site would be about roughly three-quarters of an acre, and the Home Outlet site would be reduced to 1.17 acres. And there are three variances that are being requested for the Taco Bell site specifically, and then a couple also for the, the remaining Home Outlet site. Those are all going to be based on the location of the building. I've already kind of touched on the variance for the parking. I think what you'll find is that the overall project not only is not going to be a detriment to the area, as is one of the criteria for the area variance, but it's actually going to be a benefit. You're going to see a brand-new-style Taco Bell building. It's going to be a nice new structure. It's going to clean up the existing site. It's also going to reduce the impervious coverage on the site, which is almost maxed out at nearly 95% currently. Again, we're going to, the variance on a Taco Bell site would be for 77% coverage, where 65 maximum is allowed. However, you have to look at this contextually, because the existing site has 95% coverage. So what we're doing with this redevelopment is actually reducing what's there now and improving it. And as part of that, there's going to be additional green space on-site that's not there now. And there's also going to be a great improvement to stormwater drainage and management on-site, which does not exist at this time, because the site has existed for so long. So there's going to be quite a benefit, both for these properties and the surrounding area, by virtue of reducing that, that just eyesore of a blacktop. I mean, it's, the, the majority of what you see is, is a metal building and a parking field. So this is aesthetically, it's going to bring a lot to that intersection. And as you know, that area is already highly commercial, so the variances with respect to the, the parking and with respect to the front setback, even though, again, you know, you've mentioned in various applications tonight about the substantiality of the request, we're going from 80 feet, as code requires, to 38.6 feet for the Taco Bell. However, again, you have to view it in context, and one of the other criterias is how it fits in with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. That whole corridor has varied setbacks and, and distances from Empire Boulevard likewise on Creek Street in that immediate area. So nothing that we're doing here is going to be in any way out of keeping with what's already there and existing in the surrounding area. I'm going to, for the time being, I'm going to stay with the, the actual variance request, and then, then touch on the signage, after which, I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie, who's our site engineer, who can answer probably a lot more questions than I'll be able to.
You guys are coming back next month?
We are.
And, and that's for a sign application for which business?
It's going to be primarily the Taco Bell, but it- As I understand, it's going to be both?
It'll be a shared pilot sign at the Creek Street entrance.
Okay. Because, not to get too far ahead of ourselves, but you guys are asking for a lot of signs. And I guess I direct you to the fairly new Chipotle. Maybe even take a look at their application and see where they ended up. Just as a little piece of unsolicited advice there. And if you, if you want us to defer on your current request for signs, to give you an opportunity to look at that, no problem, especially since you're coming back and asking for another sign next month. And frankly, we, somebody may want to table it for that reason in any event. But just be aware, at least from my standpoint, I'm looking at Chipotle asked for this, they got something less than this. What it was, Andy was nice enough to send me the resolution, which I just didn't get a chance to look at, but I will. But a point of reference for you, that stuff. And as far as the variance that you're about to talk about, my biggest concern there is, is safety. Safety for people using Empire, people using Creek Street, for anybody that actually goes in the restaurant, if that ever happens anymore, and then certainly the flow of, of the traffic. That is a very, you live down the road, I live just to the, I guess it would be south or east, or whatever the heck it is, and I go to the, Tim Hortons probably behind you every day in line there. And my dentist is right there as well. So I'm very familiar with it, and it is a very unique, particular piece of land. So I don't, generally speaking, don't have the issues with various uses along there, but safety is, is paramount. People drive fast on Empire, they drive less fast, but fast on Creek Street, and so that's where I would be looking for you to focus, your comments on the variances are. And then, you know, of course, how many employees you're going to have, where they're going to park, how many people do you expect to come in and sit down versus doing the drive-through, all that stuff, too. So, go ahead.
No, and those are all very valid concerns, and frankly, one of the reasons why this site was chosen with, instead of staying where they are, is because it actually provides a better and safer and ease, greater ease of traffic in and through the site than the, than the existing site does, just a, just a barely a three-tenths of a mile up the, up the road.
Yeah.
So I, I think what I'll do, Mike, you'll probably be better off to answer the questions as far as employees and employee parking on-site, and Stephanie will leave the questions with regard to the actual site operation to you. I'll just touch very briefly on the remaining area variances as far as the, the setbacks in lot coverage that are specific to the Home Outlet site. Again, the existing site already has 95% coverage. Unfortunately, with the way that it's being split, there's not as much that we can do with that site, taking into account the balance of the, the request for the parking variance in conjunction with the site improvements, improving the fencing along the Creek, Creek Street side of the, of the, of the project. So that, that particular site would still remain at approximately 93% of coverage. However, again, in context, it's at 95 now. It's going to be reduced by a couple of percentage, and again, the overall total project of the two lots is going to be much more aesthetically pleasing than, than what's there now. And again, I touched on the parking earlier. Code requires 99 parking spaces, just on the basis of the, of the size of the building. There were previously approved 71 back in 1979. And again, if you're familiar with that site, you know, their primary, excuse me, I think their busiest time is probably going to be Saturday morning, and even then, if you see 10 cars in the parking lot, that's being generous. On that, on that same topic, as far as the parking, I think it's important to note, and sorry, Stephanie, I'm going to steal some of your thunder on this one. We are splitting an existing site into two uses, but not only will the sites be complementary, they'll actually be almost opposite hours of use. So primarily, you know, more of the business for the, the Home Outlet is going to be in the morning, with either contractors or people doing projects coming in and getting their, their products in the morning. That site closes for business at 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and then it closes even earlier on Saturday, and it's not open on Sunday. Whereas, the primary traffic and customer drive for Taco Bell is going to be lunchtime, which is going to be after the normal peak hours for the home store, and then in the dinner hour and late-night hour, when there is no parking whatsoever, and there is going to be shared parking among the site as, on the overall site project. So those, all those things combined really makes the parking variance not, ultimately not nearly as substantial as it appears on paper. And then lastly, and this, this kind of gets into the signage, is, is a variance to allow the setback for the existing freestanding sign on the site. Again, it's already there, and it's just because of the reconfiguration and the splitting of, of the site, it creates the need for a new variance for the existing site. So with that, I'll turn it to the board for questions, and then allow Mike and Stephanie to answer.
All right. Anybody have any questions on what's been discussed so far on that?
I've got one, just talking about the parking.
Thank you, Christine.
You talked about the shared parking. Will there be a shared parking agreement on file, in a sense, you know, something to show that there, that that is an arrangement? And then, did planning board ask anything about, looks like you have a drive aisle between the two parking lots? How would pedestrians get across that if that's the case? I don't know if they asked that question, but that's just something that stuck out to me. If there's a shared parking agreement, you probably want to have people be able to move across safely.
There was a question at the planning board. Stephanie was at the planning board hearing, so I'll let her-
So as far as a shared parking agreement, the planning board did raise that question, too, and there will be, you know, cross-access easements, shared parking, snow storage, things like that, there will be an agreement, and that has been a, kind of a question at the planning board level to provide those documents to the town for review. And as far as kind of access between the two, is that, your question is-
Yeah, I was just, you know, if you have a shared, if, if you're saying that, you know, we're going to use some of this parking count over here to kind of offset, I think you'd want to incorporate that then into the site plan a little bit for safety, because I think that's one of the things, with, with so many cars and it being primarily a drive-through, cars moving across, if there are people that are going across from the parking lot inside, just to account for that.
Okay. Yeah, we can certainly add some, you know, striping there for like a, a crosswalk through the drivelanes.
Thanks. Yeah, that's, no, that's, that's a good question. And again, the concern, do we know whether the town engineer has yet commented on the traffic flow and the potential for queuing and all that stuff? Does anybody know?
Uh, there, so to kind of backtrack a little bit, we started conversations with PRC back in November. We've been to two different PRC meetings. We did go to the planning board for sketch plan, and then last week for the preliminary site plan and subdivision. So we have gotten the initial sketch plan comments, and as well as kind of the full site plan set comments from the town engineer. And the queuing and traffic circulation has been one of the big conversations with the planning board as well, just trying to visualize how this will all work. And it's come a long way from our first-
Uh-huh.
-concept with just lines on an aerial, basically, to help with the flow here. One of our initial concepts, we looked at having a, two entrances on Creek Street, one where we have it now, as well as one lined up with that main drive aisle. So it'd be kind of a straight-through, almost like Tim Hortons has. And that was shot down pretty quick. You know, the town doesn't want extra curb cuts out there, and, you know, we intentionally kept only the one to the south to help prevent cut-through traffic, so that you don't have a lot of people that are on Empire and say, "Hey, I can just zip through this site and, you know, fly through while pedestrians are crossing," and things like that. So we did intentionally design that. I do want to point out that the second drive-through lane shown here, the interior one is what I'm calling the second, is currently shown for potential future construction. Taco Bell is still working on that technology piece. If you guys have been to the new location on Henrietta, in Henrietta, on Lehigh Station, they tried their A-GO Mobile concept, where it was like pre-order, and then you'd pick up in this lane, and that hasn't worked out so well, so they're kind of putting that technology on hold and developing two full-access order points, similar to what you would see at a McDonald's. That piece isn't ready to build today. So we are calling it future, but we want to be transparent and make sure everybody is aware. So when we talk about drive-through queuing, you know, it's pros and cons. If that doesn't get built right away, then we don't have that queuing right away. But even without that, we do have 11 cars shown in that main drive-through lane before it would even back up into the drive aisle. We have added, if you were, came in off of Creek Street and you're heading north in the site, we do have a stop sign there and stop bar, and on that sign, we are going to put one of those signs that says, "Do not block intersection." And then, when you're coming in off of Empire and heading east, we do have a stop bar, which will just be painted text. So that is a 40-foot-wide drive aisle between the two sets of parking on the Taco Bell and the Home Outlet, and we've striped it out for three lanes, and this is another thing that's kind of evolved through the discussions with the different levels of the town. We're now showing that middle lane to be 10 feet wide, and then the two outer ones to be 15 feet, to really, if you're in that middle lane, to really kind of restrict where you are, so that the through lanes have more room to maneuver. And that lane is intended to be, if there is ever more than the 11 cars and that second lane isn't built yet, the drive-through traffic could temporarily queue in that space, and there would still be full two-way access through the site, which-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say that, you know, that's honestly a lot more than you see in many fast-food restaurants. I think McDonald's, it's pretty typical that just a couple of cars after the order point, you kind of back up along that drive, and then you're hugging the parking spaces, and it really does block, if you've ever been the one that's stuck in your car waiting to back out, because somebody's ordering, you know, that order lane behind you. This layout really does eliminate that. And Taco Bell really does pride themselves on the speed of service, too. So even in that peak hour, where if that drive-through lane is full, it's going to clear out pretty quick as well.
Okay. So if I'm understanding you correctly, there is not a plan to, there, the, the plan is for, I guess, I'll call it a traditional drive-through setup, where you go to window one, you order, and then you go to window two, you pick up, and maybe you pay at window one. But it's not going to be the, "Hey, let me call," or "Let me online order something," and then just go pick it up. Right now, that's what the plan is.
That's correct.
Because I do think that that's, Chipotle does that. Not that it's better, but I'm just saying, they, they don't have the traditional order in this window and then pick up at that window. But, okay. And you're familiar with the current location and its operation, right? So if there were cars all along the row leading to the windows, and they looped around almost to the road that goes toward Baytown Plaza, you know what I'm talking about? Because I have seen cars there before, in the whole row, and then, and then looped all the way around that far. I don't know how many, I never counted them, but would this setup be able to accommodate that?
Yeah, this is, far exceeds our capacity over there. That, that site is very narrow. It's only about 100 feet wide.
Yeah.
It also will never have the ability to add a second lane. So we know that's where it's going. We're only three months away from, three to four months away, we're told from Taco Bell corporate for the technology to do that. But it may very well be available when we get ready to build this restaurant, should it be approved. Yeah, it, this-
Yeah, that's it right there, right? And did you bring that up?
Yeah, that's it. So I think to answer your question, I, I think you could probably queue, I measured it before and I just don't remember the number, I'm going to say maybe seven cars at the most before you would start to impact those parking spaces at the rear of the site if, you know, if all the parking spaces were full. So our layout, new layout with this site will provide a lot more queuing before it would even potentially impact the parking lot.
And the brand standard nationwide is eight cars. So they really, you know, eight cars is the brand standard. If you can do better than that, then that's great. If you can get to 11 or 12, it's phenomenal. So, you know, Taco Bell, and I think it was touched on it before, what they do is a little bit different than a lot of the other QSRs. They really, speed of service is number one. And that's why special orders, I shouldn't even say this, special orders do upset us. So we, there's no, there's no pull ahead parking. You don't pull ahead. You can't order special. And that's why, because we want to get a car through in less than three minutes. And that's why you don't see, you know, even though we do a high volume of drive-through traffic, you don't generally see, typically we don't have problems in our parking lot. And this, even though you see the center aisle, most of our sites, the drive-through does queue through the center aisle. So you do have to cross to get into the restaurant from one side of the parking lot, across where people queue in. So it's not atypical there. I would say, if I touch on the, the setback on Empire, it's, it's driven mostly by the ability, we really need to get the building that way in order to queue enough cars to, to create that long stack. So, you know, if we were to pull the building back to the center of the site, we'd only be able to queue six or seven cars. So that, that drives that a little bit. I don't know if I've touched on that, but that's one of the reasons why that's there.
Yeah. So can you talk, I, I don't, I don't, I don't want to cut you off.
No, I'm fine. I, you guys have been very patient tonight, so I don't need to do extra talking. I'm happy just to answer questions if that's easier.
So, so I am interested in knowing, you know, how many spots you're going to need for employees. We need that. And then also, I think we all know that fast food restaurants, I don't know if that's a pejorative term, I don't mean it that way, but fast food restaurants, the way that they serve their customers has changed dramatically, not just with COVID, but even before that. And that, I'm not going to say nobody goes inside, but very few people. We've had a similar request for reduced parking from Chipotle, which again, take a look at that. But also the McDonald's on 250 and 441, which is a high-volume fast food restaurant. I, I don't remember the degree of the parking variance requested or granted, but I'm pretty sure we did. And they have two lanes now. So if you could comment on that a little bit, that, I, I don't know when the parking code was put into place, but it certainly was several years ago at least, and things have changed since then. And I'm not encouraging a whole bunch of variance requests in front of this board, but I'm just saying, reality is that things have, have changed. So.
Yeah, I can, I can just speak to my time with the company. I've been with the company over three years. When I started, I was surprised to find out that 70% of the business at that time was drive-through. During COVID, it was 98, 99, mostly 100%. Our, our local location that we're offsetting to here, we just did an analysis, and 87% of our business goes through the drive-through. So it's, it's, it's mostly, almost all drive-through driven. I mean, if we, we might have eight employees on at a time, we might have six of them that drive a car. So that gives you a little idea of, you know, there might be a shift change where you might have some overlap, or there might be multiple cars. But, you know, not the need for parking that, that used to, used to be there. We're even seeing some, some municipalities are actually changing the code the other way, that they're saying, you know, you can't have over a certain amount of parking.
Yeah.
So, but this-
Well, because of green space issues, I suppose, yeah.
Yes, yep. And in this, this particular case, we feel very confident about the amount of parks that we have here. EC Barton, who owns the property now, had to approve this site plan, and they've, they've approved the site plan. They feel comfortable with the number of parks that are provided there. So, you know, it's a fairly significant investment. It's a, we're going to have, you know, all in with equipment and everything in the building, upwards of almost $3 million. And the other building is at the end of its life, and we really can't reinvest on that site. It's just, it's too limited with where we're at. So it was, you know, we've been looking a long time around here. There's really limited amounts of, of real estate that you could really put our, put our restaurant and do it in a successful area. And you also don't want to offset the, the building somewhere too far to the south and impact other, other restaurants. This, this is a new restaurant, but we, we will be taking most of the business we currently have. And Hard Road really kind of limits, it, it isn't going to be a super high-volume restaurant because we have another restaurant pretty, pretty close by. So we don't expect this to be a situation where it has a huge impact as far as traffic or, or additional business coming into the area.
And it may be in your application, and I missed it, but is the dining, indoor dining area in this proposed restaurant, the same size as the one, current one, smaller, larger?
Yeah, the current building is, that's what's called the Mission Building, where they had the old Spanish tile on the building. And those restaurants ranged between 62 and 80 seats usually. This is a 40-seat restaurant.
Okay.
And some of them have even been reduced from that. But this, this is a 40. Well, actually, I think, excuse me, we, this one is a 50-seat restaurant. We probably won't utilize all that. And the reason why we go with this, this particular sized building is it allows us three production lines. And that's something new too. So Taco Bell only had two, this allows us three, more speed of service. Because there's so many points of entry. We're getting orders from, from mobile, we're getting orders from pickup, we're getting, you know, the drive-through. So now we've added another production line to speed up the drive-through capability.
I do want to make sure that we have the right proposed seating number, if that's relevant on parking variance request.
Yeah, we went through that.
How about in both, for both parcels? Can you tell us how delivery trucks are going to get around and why that won't interfere with any parking spots or traffic or?
Both locations typically will have deliveries during off-hours, likely probably in, you know, mid-morning or something. So it's not when there's peak customers in.
And let me interrupt you on that. But are the users of the property going to control that as much as they can or totally? I mean, I don't know.
I can speak to that. We do totally tell our, our supplier when they can come with a truck. Yeah.
Okay. And do we know whether the home store is going to do that or?
Um, the way here tonight, I did speak in, stop in and speak to an assistant manager, and he did mention that his deliveries usually do come in the morning. I didn't specifically ask if, you know, what their relationship is and if they can dictate when that happens.
All right. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So trucks would generally enter from Creek Street, and if they're delivering to Home Outlet, they would head up, you know, north towards the Taco Bell to kind of straighten out as much as they can. And then they would back up into that striped area on the east side of the Home Outlet building and unload, and then pull out to the west and leave on Empire. And then Taco Bell similarly would enter from Creek Street. They just kind of stop in front of the store and unload and then leave. So they would be able to utilize that center lane as well to unload there and still allow for full two-way traffic.
All right. I, I just got confused a little bit. What I'm looking at here on my right is Creek Street. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, the right is Creek Street.
Okay. So I, I guess I wasn't confused. But, but I don't know that I've ever seen anybody going into the home store off of Creek Street. Is there even an entrance?
There's not an entrance there now.
Just a fence, right?
Correct. Yeah. So their deliveries now, you know, would kind of go in off of Empire and kind of circle around.
But the intent would be to, you know, get rid of part of that fence or whatever to allow entry to both businesses off Creek Street as well. All right.
Correct. And then having the delivery trucks come in off of Creek Street to deliver to Home Outlet will just be an easier maneuver for that truck driver too, because then he'll be able to, like I said, he can kind of straighten up as he pulls toward Taco Bell and then back up along the building. If they did come in off of Empire, then they would just need to probably back up into that main drive aisle before they could kind of get back out through Creek Street.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if there's enough room to go around that building to get back and use Creek Street as an exit. Only because if they have to take left, a left on Empire, good luck to them. So, okay. All right. I, I, we haven't gotten into the signs. I don't know if you guys want to talk, take a little break and talk about whether you just want to put those off to next month. That's totally up to you. But any questions about any of the stuff that we've talked about so far?
No.
Okay. So if you, I, I think that's what's left is, are the signs. If you guys want to launch into that, okay. But as I said, you're coming back next month. And I do want you to take a look at Chipotle, because at least in my mind, that's-
It's kind of the benchmark for that area.
Yeah, I mean-
Just a couple of months ago, right?
Yeah, right.
When did they get their signage approved? Do you, I started to look at all the gentos, and I did find their parking requirements, but I didn't see the signage one.
It was in '21. I want to say September, October.
Okay.
I mean, we can get that, we can get that to you. But, but I, again, I don't want to cut you off tonight. If you, if you want to present on that tonight, and frankly, we usually ask applicants what you can really live with. I anticipate that'll happen here. But I do want you to see, give you the opportunity to see Chipotle and digest it. And then, because maybe given more time, you'll be able to say, well, yeah, okay, they got what they got, but our, our situation is different. So I'll leave that up to you. And again, if you want to take a break and confer out there, it's up to you guys.
I mean, I guess I would like to at least talk to the board about it and see-
Sure.
-what you guys like, what you don't like. You know, I did look at, you know, Chipotle and, you know, McDonald's out there. A lot of, several of those businesses do have multiple signs on multiple sides of the building. And this is obviously unique, having the two frontages. So it makes more sense, you know, to have more than one.
Yeah. So, so go ahead and do that. But I'll say one more thing to you is, we don't take offense if somebody comes in and tells us what we've done in the past. We've had applicants come in and give us, say, well, you, you gave Dollar Store across the street this many signs, and you gave McDonald's, and you gave Keyback. You, you want to take the time to do that work? All power to you. I mean, it's all really a matter of public record.
Right. And, you know, so I think this is similar to a lot of those other locations with number of signs. I don't have the square footage of all those signs available to compare that. But I do want to point out on the elevation. So first, we're upgrading this to a brick building. So this is really unique to like Taco Bell in the Rochester market, where Mike has been putting in the extra money to have this nice-looking store. If you've been to any of the newer locations, the Henrietta and Lehigh Station, there's one in Parenton Hills, Chi-Li, Greece. Am I missing any of the most recent? Yeah. And I think this Google Earth of the Henrietta and Lehigh Station, while, you know, under construction, they're really a nice-looking building. The drawback to it is it doesn't have the Taco Bell Southwest colors. You could take the signs off of the store at, you know, 1922, and you would know that that's a Taco Bell. You can drive around town and you know what the old Pizza Huts were. Like, you could just tell from the building. The negative to the upgraded brick is you don't know. That could be a Verizon, that could be, you know, who knows what it is if you take those signs off. So, and being on the busy Empire Boulevard, five lanes, you know, 45 mile an hour posted speed limit, there's a lot going on out there. It is a smaller building. So having significant signage on the building will help identify to traffic, you know, as you're flying by on Empire, to get into the correct lanes, you can access the site. Our architects have also put in a lot of time to develop this look with what I'll call the tower elements. And because it fronts on both streets, we wanted to put, so the backside on Creek Street is just a cooler. There's an option where it could be the, the shorter height cooler, and it just looks like a cooler. But again, it's upgraded to all look like a nice put-together building. And you can't, you know, if you look at it quick, you can't even tell which is the front from the back. You've got a nice tower element that you'll see from both Empire and Creek Street. And with that, we like the sign look on each side of that tower. So is it, from the board's perspective, is it necessary to see those signs? You know, maybe not as far as safety or identifying the building or anything, you know, all of those items. But it is critical to the architectural aspects of the building, to have the architectural symmetry on each side. And if you look at the Bell logo over the door, that brick is kind of like recessed in, and it's just a nice-looking vestibule. And if you take that sign off completely, then it just looks like something's kind of missing there. And I know there are, and I think the existing Taco Bell that kind of faces the plaza away from the road doesn't have a sign over that area. And it does, you know, looks like something's kind of missing there because it doesn't have that signage. So, you know, that's how we got to the, the five signs on the building and then the pylon is all of these architectural features that we've upgraded for this site and to really help identify that this is a Taco Bell building.
Okay. So the five signs on the building, I, just, why don't you point out exactly, if you can use this drawing, the two towers, obviously.
Right. So the, from the drive-through side, if you were standing in Chipotle and looking at the drive-through, you would see that middle north elevation, and you would see the two signs there. And then when you're looking at the short side, that's what you would see if you were standing in Empire or Creek and looking at it, you would see the tower and then the sign. And then if you were at Home Outlet, you would see the front door there with the Bell. And the Bell over the door is the only sign that we need the variance for, for the 50% logo.
Logo.
You know, we could have thrown just Taco Bell text there, and that wouldn't require a variance. We could have done a similar thing to what's on the towers and had both, and it wouldn't require a variance. We just opted to have just the Bell, which forces it into the variance because of that 50% requirement.
Okay. All right. So basically, because of the, to summarize, the two entrances, the traffic, the architectural design of the building, all that, and certainly in your opinion, weighs in favor of having the, the five signs. I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I do want to summarize it. I don't, I think that's a fair summary of it. Not unlike arguments Chipotle made, just so you know. But, okay. All right. Any, anything else on signs or?
Also, there's a freestanding sign.
Well, yeah, that's what we're gonna, we're gonna, that's what we're gonna hear about next month?
No, no.
An addition.
This application, there's a freestanding-
So this application has the Taco Bell pylon, which will be in the northwest corner of the site, closest to the Empire-Chipotle entrance. And then what'll be heard next month is a shared pylon sign at the Creek Street entrance.
That's all, that's shared, literally shared with Taco Bell and Home, whatever?
Correct. Having two signs on one post.
Okay. All right. Well, that, that's a lot. All right. Let's talk a little bit about the directional signs and the necessity. That's a variance based upon the size of the signs?
Uh, yes. Two square feet is allowed, and these are four square feet. And that is one slight difference with the application that you'll hear next month as well. We were proposing to have a Taco Bell exit sign, or, excuse me, enter sign at the Creek Street entrance. But if we go with a shared pylon sign, we wouldn't have that, and we would just have the Taco Bell sign on the shared pole with Home Outlet. So one of these signs goes away if that other variance is, you know, granted, and if that's favorable to the board. So we're only proposing one of these directional signs at the Empire exit.
Okay. I get that.
And then the Home Outlet freestanding sign still remains as well?
Correct. Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah. And with the other one too, you know, we're not proposing any changes to that sign with either application.
Yeah. The only variance request for that signage is just because it's now going to be on effectively a new lot.
So it's closer on a new lot.
So it's, it's closer on the new lot. So it's, it's not moving, it's not changing.
Right.
It's literally existing condition.
And we have the setback for the Taco Bell pylon sign for the northwest corner there for both the front and side setbacks. And that's just due to the limitations with the site, the location of the building, the drive-through lanes. And when you drive down Empire, that is in line with almost every other sign. I was driving that tonight to kind of take a peek. And I, you know, if you're driving north on Empire and you're looking at those pylons, they're almost lined up really nice with everything except Tim Hortons, which was setback further. So honestly, I think you kind of missed the Tim Hortons sign because your eyes looking at that line of all the other signs. So we did try to match the same setback that the existing Home Outlet sign has.
Okay. What's the status of planning board? I know it's put off, but for- I know it's put off, but for, just waiting on us, or?
They tabled it last week. They still were questioning some of the internal circulation items, but I think they really did want to hear how you guys acted on at least the variance portion of this, not the signage.
Okay. Well, so my thoughts on this are, generally speaking, where we are now, I'm just trying to go through the memo here, just to make sure I'm not missing anything. But, but I'm okay on the, the first listed application with the area variance. I'm okay to vote on that tonight. They had the 28% more lot coverage than max, the area variance to allow 50%, 54% fewer parking spaces, and I guess a special permit for signage to allow the existing freestanding sign. I, I don't have an issue. So I guess that's all of the first application.
Yeah.
So I, tonight, I'm ready to move on that. The area variances for the Taco Bell, I'm, generally speaking, I feel okay with those. The lot coverage one and the fewer parking spaces, I, I don't think we're going to learn more about that. I think they've done a good job of presenting that. But I am, you know, I am wondering what more, if anything, the planning board's going to do with site plan that may affect our thoughts on the, the area variances for Taco Bell, if that makes sense. So I guess where I'm leaning for the area variances for Taco Bell is that if nothing else changes, I would probably make a motion to approve those. But I, I don't want to force planning board's hand, especially if we're coming back next month, I guess. When's your next meeting with planning board?
Uh, next week.
Oh, okay.
And-
Well, I mean, if we were to approve those area variances, it's based on those plans, and that's-
That's it, that would be it.
Right. And any of the engineering comments that have come back haven't alluded to site plan changes. You know, there's no comments that are talking about moving the building, they're not-
So I guess in a sense, Andres Tristram made a really good point, that the risk would be with you, I suppose. If we approve variances based upon this, and then for whatever reason it changes, either because you wanted to or you're told, you're told to change it, then so be it. But you, you see what I mean? I don't want to, I also don't want to have the planning board say, oh, jeez, we want to change it, but they just got a variance. So it's the cart before the horse to a certain extent, but maybe that's their problem. Okay, so, and as far as the signs-
Now Terry will call us.
As far as the signs, thank you for the presentation. Though, though, those portions of the second application, I'm, I'm going to move, I imagine I'm going to move to, to table. So having said all that, I want to make sure that we're doing whatever seeker is appropriate. So let's, let's go to the application number seven. Oh, I should note that I don't see any comments, either call-ins or electronically. But on application number seven, I'm going to make a motion to declare it an unlisted action under seeker and to issue a negative declaration.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I'll make a motion to approve the requests. The area variance, excuse me, to allow 28% more lot coverage than the max, the area variance to allow 50%, 54% fewer parking spots, and the special permit to allow the existing Home Depot freestanding sign to remain in its, in essence, its, its current location.
Home Outlet.
Not Home Depot.
Yeah, Home Outlet, yeah.
Wow, okay. My apologies. To everyone. In any event, that is my, that's my motion.
I'll second it.
You know, you, you don't realize, we're actually doing pretty well tonight, time-wise. It may not seem like it, but we are.
I'll second it. I got, at the one comment, I think we wanted to say something about the shared parking agreement in there as well for that variance.
Good point.
That's on file.
All right, so I'll amend my approval motion to require that to be done and filed. Any further discussion on that motion?
No.
All right, so we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then on application number eight, I guess I'd, so if we're gonna, if we're gonna vote on area variances but table, we should do seeker now.
If you're gonna vote on area variance.
Yes, okay, so then on seeker, I would move to declare this an unlisted action and also to issue a negative declaration.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so as far as application number eight, all, all requests for special permit regarding signage, I'm going to move to table those till next month to give the applicant an opportunity, not just to look at Chipotle, but perhaps any other buildings in the area, and provide comparisons, if you like, if you so choose.
I'll second that. Should we vote on that first, right?
Sure. So we have a motion to table a portion of the application and a second.
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the area variances for the Taco Bell portion. The first is for the proposed building, 41 approximately feet from the minimum eight-foot, then 12% more lot coverage than the maximum, and then 73% fewer parking spots than allowed. And I, I just will say on these, and, and even the first one, on paper, on numbers, yes, they are substantial variance requests, but I do think we're living in different times. Applicants done a good job of presenting the reasons in support of the variances. There's, there's no opposition in the record to this. Planning board still is going through to make sure that safety issues and delivery issues, all the things we've raised are going to be addressed. So I'm, even though there's substantial variances, I'm comfortable making a motion to approve those variance requests at this time.
I think I would note, too, that the, you know, for this type of restaurant, they are a drive-through chain, not in a sense where other restaurants that we've approved are sit-down restaurants. I think that's the, you know, the big designation for that parking.
Right. Great. And honestly, it's, it's, to me, being so nearby and really going by that every day, it's nice to see that space being utilized.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the area variances and a second. Any further discussion?
Who seconded that?
Aye.
I did.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, then we will see you next month. If you need anything in terms of documents, these guys are great helping you get that stuff.
I guess just one more question on signage, so we can be prepared next month. Any feedback on what you guys like or don't like? Do you guys, you know, number of signs versus area of signs?
We can approve the least amount you need to get done.
Yeah.
The job. That's all we can do.
We may say to you, if you, if you're asking for five, if you got three, and you were able to choose the location, I'm not, you may want to go back and watch the Chipotle hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because a lot of the questions are going to be the same.
Any need to resubmit anything before, or we'll just talk about it during the meeting and then?
No, I think what we'll do is we'll take this up at our work session, which, by the way-
Don't you have to, isn't, isn't there also an application?
Well, there's an application next month for signage, but-
So I guess we'll just keep it on that. Yeah, that makes sense, rather than address this.
I think if you have new information, you know, like if you say, oh, we're going to come back and do this, you should submit something so we at least can reference it prior to the meeting.
Yeah. Is it too late to start next month, a half hour early? Has a notice gone out?
We don't know what transportation is doing.
Well, they can go somewhere else.
I mean, come on. But, so, we'll, we'll let you know exactly when we're going to hear it, but I guess it does make sense that there is a new application to combine everything with that one.
Right.
But, check, check it out. I mean, we got 10 next month, if we have a half hour.
This is tabled.
And this is tabled, and the other one's tabled.
Right.
Verizon's tabled.
Right.
Going for 12 next month.
Bring your coffee.
I mean, what happens if three of us don't show up, there's no meeting, right? I'm just saying, that, if three of us don't show up, there's no meeting.
Yeah, there's no quorum.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah. All right, folks, so we'll see you next month, and I think that was actually the last application, right?
It was. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
That's right.
Thank you, so, yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you.
Good to see you.
Still, nobody is here for application number two. So guess what? We're going to have even more next month, most likely, because probably somebody just forgot, or-
Probably on vacation.
Unless-
I was going to say, I, I-
Are you okay?
I'm okay with it.
So what we tried to do last time with the, not Billys-
Billys, yeah.
And we were rebuffed and told not to do that by somebody that's now probably on a beach or somewhere, I don't, I don't know, but we have a thorough written application, so.
The only thing I would caution is to make sure that if there was public comment-
Yep. Yeah.
Especially having it out of order and having skipped it.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, well, just put it over. I mean, it's, I don't, it's not going to take long.
No, all right. But I, one thing I would say about that, though, is if you could check out if we can put something in our application that, that says if applicant fails to appear, the board reserves the right to move forward on the written application, reserves the right to. I don't know if that gets it done or not. It, it doesn't happen all that often, but it's, it happens. So, and when they're, when they're simple, like Billys, I mean, it was nice to see her